This is Rick Cocke's staff for recording. You can begin.
Awesome. This is Leishan Gargano and I am now calling the meeting to order. I would like to do a roll call, just go by names. So Mark Bloomfield.
Here.
Sam Fitch.
Here.
Ann Goldfarb. Terrence. Does Ann have an audio problems?
Yeah, I got it. I'm here.
Oh, okay. Sam Libby.
Present.
Gavin McMillan.
Here.
Melanie Nieske.
Here.
Great. All right. So the first thing for us to do today is to take a look at the meeting minutes from May 20th of 2020 and hopefully, any thoughts or notes on those?
They look good. Yeah, this Commissioner Libby. I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes from May 20th, 2020.
Sam, Commissioner Sam Fitch, I'd second that motion.
Great. I will do a quick roll call again. Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Ann Goldfarb.
Hi.
Leishan Gargano, aye. Sam Libby.
Aye.
Gavin McMillan.
Aye.
Melanie Nieske.
Aye.
Great. Passes. And next, the nomination of officers. So first, we will, we do the chair and then we'll nominate for second chair, right? It's actually the other direction going. All right. Any nominations for chair?
This is Commissioner Gavin McMillan. Could staff just remind me and maybe all of us what who the current vice chair and secretary are?
So Ann is the current vice chair. And then I believe we have a second vice chair, not a secretary.
Okay.
And that's me, Sam Libby.
And that's Sam? Okay.
Yeah.
I would like to nominate Ann Goldfarb for chair.
I'll second that. This is Leishan Gargano. Are there any other nominations?
I would also nominate Sam Libby to the.
We ought to address the chair first and then we can.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to go one by one? Got it.
Yeah.
No, I don't have any other nominations.
So hearing none, I'll take a roll call on Ann for chair. So I'll go the opposite direction this time. Melanie Nieske.
Aye.
Gavin McMillan.
Aye.
Sam Libby.
Aye.
This is Leishan Gargano, aye. Ann Goldfarb.
Aye.
Sam Fitch.
Aye.
Mark Bloomfield.
Aye.
All right. Do I hand it over now or do I do the whole set? I'll do the whole set, I guess. So let's do first vice chair next. I think Gavin had a nomination.
I do. I nominate Sam Libby for second or for vice chair.
This is Mark Bloomfield. I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I will take a roll call. Melanie Nieske.
Aye.
Gavin McMillan.
Aye.
Sam Libby.
Aye.
This is Leishan Gargano, aye. Ann Goldfarb.
Aye.
Sam Fitch.
Aye.
Mark Bloomfield.
Aye.
Okay, we have a new vice chair. And the third one for second vice chair. Any nominations there? And feel free to nominate yourself.
Yes, I'll nominate Melanie Nieske. Go ahead, Mark, if you had a different idea.
Oh, I was just gonna nominate myself, but I'm happy to let Melanie do it.
Melanie, is that something you're interested in before we grasp it upon you?
I'm happy to do it as well, but Mark, I think you'd run a great meeting too, so either works fine.
Let's go with Mark. I'll nominate, I'll nominate Mark Bloomfield as second vice chair.
Okay, so we have one nomination at this point or two?
I'm gonna return my previous nomination, nominate Mark Bloomfield. Just go with that. Be a second.
Okay, I'll second.
Second.
Okay, roll call for second vice chair. Mark Bloomfield.
Aye.
Sam Fitch.
Aye.
Ann Goldfarb.
Aye.
Leishan Gargano, aye. Sam Libby.
Aye.
Gavin McMillan.
Aye.
Melanie Nieske.
Aye.
All right. With that, I will hand the meeting over to Ann.
Thank you. Next, we have staff updates. Do we have any updates today?
We do not, Commissioner Goldfarb. Thank you.
Okay. So we will then proceed to agenda items. We have three docket scheduled for today's planning commission meeting and I'll take this time to explain the public hearing process. There'll be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the subject dockets during the respective virtual public hearing portion of each item. The order of presentation will be first to hear from the staff, then the applicant, and then we'll move to the public testimony from any members of the public. Please direct all of your questions and comments to the board. The chair will direct any questions that arise during the hearing to the appropriate party. Once we're satisfied that we've heard all the relevant testimony, the public hearing will be closed. The planning commission will then discuss the application and vote on an action. Any members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the planning commission homepage beforehand. Once those who've signed up in advance have had a chance to speak, others will have the opportunity. If you joined the computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and the docket number in the chat box to the right. If you dialed into the meeting via phone, unmute yourself with a star six and state your desire to speak. We will then add your name to the list in the chat box and proceed in that order. When it is your turn to speak, unmute yourself by clicking the microphone button at the bottom of the team's bar or if on the phone, push star six. And then state your name and address for the record. A timing system has been established and a timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Those wishing to speak can pool time at three minutes per person for a maximum of 10 minutes. You'll need to provide the names and addresses of the other people, up to three others beside yourself who are in attendance and donating their time. Anyone who is pooling time will need to attend the virtual hearing so we can verify their presence as we would at an in-person hearing. Please do not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. The chat box should be used for public hearing speaker signup only. Please remain on mute when possible. Moderators will mute you if we see that your connection is the source of background noise. Members of the public will be unable to share their screen during public comments. Applicants, please have your presentations pulled up and ready to go. I'll announce when we are ready for you to present and at that time you can share your screen. Okay, so our first docket item is docket SU-18-0017, the Toynton Riding Arena. Staff.
There. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Summer Frederick with Community Planning and Permitting. I will go ahead and share my screen. And if someone could verify that you are seeing
Yes.
the cover page, thank you very much. So this is docket SU-18-0017, the Toynton Indoor Riding Arena located at 6871 North 55th Street. And I believe somebody else has started sharing their screen.
If that's one of the public speakers who has signed up to speak, we can't have your screen shared at this point. Summer Frederick is sharing her screen so she can make her presentation.
You can take it back over.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. All right. So is the presentation back on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. So a little bit of a project overview. The applicant and property owner is Bill Toynton. Again, the subject property is 6871 North 55th Street. The applicant is Bill Toynton and his agent is Elizabeth Smith. The parcel is zoned agricultural and is approximately 35 acres. There is an existing approximately 1,300 square foot residence on the parcel as well as 5,679 square feet of agricultural accessory structures. The original proposal for this application was to construct an approximately 3,800 square foot riding arena, I'm sorry, 38,000 square foot riding arena to train for reined cow horse events. A revised application was later submitted for the construction of an approximately 28,000 square foot indoor riding arena and barn. So.
Hi, Summer.
Yes.
This is, this is Commissioner Bloomfield. I wanted to actually do a disclosure. I forgot to do it before you started speaking.
Sure.
I have, I have worked with Elizabeth Smith and Finos Architecture in the past. I have since sold the company and I'm no longer involved and I have not had any affiliation or involvement with this project. So I don't see any conflict of interest, but I just wanted to make that disclosure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So for context, this parcel is at the north, I'm sorry, the southwest corner of the intersection of North 55th Street and Nywha Road. It's shown on your screen outlined in red. This is the comprehensive plan map for the subject property and as you can see, there are view protection corridors associated with both North 55th Street and Nywha Road. The parcel is covered with the agricultural lands of statewide importance designation. The northern portion, small portion of the parcel does fall within the NLNA buffer for Haystack Mountain. And as you can see, the parcel is essentially bisected from east to west by the Johnson Ditch with a small portion of the Hinman Ditch located in the northeastern portion of the parcel. So as you can see, across North 55th Street to the east and along the southern parcel boundary, those properties are owned by the city's open space and mountain parks, public lands. And so this is an aerial view of the region or the larger area. The subject parcel is outlined in red. And zooming in here is the subject parcel. I will also note that Mr. Toynton owns the parcel immediately to the west as well. And these two parcels are functionally used as one parcel. So in 2018, the original proposal was submitted and again, that was for an indoor riding arena that was just under 38,000 square feet and it was proposed to be located along the western boundary of the subject parcel. The western boundary is shown here with a red line. And the original proposal is shown shaded in blue. This is a closer view of that proposal. Again, this was a structure, a proposed structure that was 120 feet by 260 feet with the area that's shaded in red was a observation platform that opened into the riding arena. This proposal did, after analyzing it and reviewing the application materials, staff did identify some significant issues with the proposal related to visual impacts along the view protection corridor as well as the bulk and mass of the proposed structure. And so what you're seeing on your screen is a Google street view of the proposed location of the structure, which is here to the farthest left. And then for context, in the middle is the residence, which is located at 5,400 Nywha Road and the barn that's also located on that parcel. And that is the parcel that Mr. Toynton owns immediately to the west of the subject property. So after several conversations and site visits and discussions with county staff and the property owner, the property owner and his agent went back and reviewed some four other alternate sites for the proposed riding arena. And there were various pros and cons associated with all four of those. The final revised proposal that came in, as you can see here, is labeled three mod. And so that was a modified proposal between the alternative three and alternative four as seen on your screen. So that is the application and the proposal that is before you today. And so this is an aerial with that revised location shown. As you can see, it is located more towards the eastern portion of the parcel and it is associated with the other existing structures that are already constructed on the parcel. So this shows the site plan revised on the left side of the screen outlined in red is the previous location of the original proposal as it relates to the current revised proposal that is in front of you today. So the proposal, the new proposed structure is outlined here in black. And then there are two barn structures that are proposed to be removed to allow for the construction. And those are also identified on this drawing. This is a closer version of that site plan that makes it a little easier to see what is proposed to be constructed as well as proposed to be deconstructed. And the revised, excuse me, the revised size of this structure is approximately 28,000 square feet. So this is a floor plan of the first floor of the proposed structure. And as you can see, it includes not just the riding arena, but stalls for the horses as well. This is the second floor and again, there is a lofted viewing area and office associated with the riding arena below. These are elevations of the proposed structure. So this is the north elevation. This is what would be visible from Nywha Road. This is south. This is the facade that would be facing that southern open space and mountain parks parcel. The western view is what would be facing Mr. Toynton's adjacent property and east is what would be facing North 55th Street. So these are some rendering comparisons that were submitted by the applicant. The photographs on the left side of the screen are just photographs as is and on the right, they include the proposed, a rendering of the proposed riding arena. In this photograph, it's located here just immediately to the left of the electric pole. And this is the entrance to the subject property off of North 55th Street. And as you can see on the right side of the screen, that is what the rendering would show for the proposed riding arena. And this is traveling along North 55th Street towards Nywha Road. Again, closer to that intersection of North 55th and Nywha. And this is actually a photograph taken from that intersection. And then these are shots taken along Nywha Road looking at the subject property. And this is farther along Nywha Road. And so this was referred out to the standard referral agencies and departments and divisions. The majority of the responses were relatively standard. The fire protection district as well as the development review team engineering staff noted, made notes related to emergency access is necessary to be shown on the building permit plans. The county, the chief building official noted that building permits and observation reports would be required. And also noted that a code analysis would need to be done for the proposed structure because of the mixed occupancy. And that is related to the office as well as the riding arena and barn use. The county parks and open space natural resource staff did raise concerns related to the negative visual impacts to the view protection corridors. And as I'll mention later in the analysis, staff has addressed those through recommended conditions of approval. The city open space and mountain park staff did note that they own property immediately adjacent to this, to the subject property and that the Johnson Ditch cannot be interrupted or interfered with. And wanted the property owner to be aware that the adjacent land may be used, maybe leased for a more intensive ag use than it currently is in the future. During the referral period, staff did receive one comment from an adjacent property owner and that was in support of this proposal. I will note that we have received two additional comments. One that was forwarded to you, the planning commission, and that was from the land manager of the adjacent open space and mountain parks properties and that comment expressed support of the proposal. Excuse me, the other APO comment that came in, just came in about 20 minutes ago. And that was from an adjacent property owner on the north side of Nywha Road. And that comment was requesting confirmation that the proposal intended to keep the primary access for the subject parcel off of North 55th and that the access would not be moved to Nywha Road. And I will say that this proposal does intend to keep the access off North 55th Street and not move it to Nywha Road. So the application was reviewed against the criteria found in article 4-601 of the code. And as condition, staff found that the proposal did meet these criteria and I will just go through and highlight some of the relevant criteria. Criteria number one is that the use will comply with the minimum zoning requirements. And per article 4-102 FD, floor area in excess of 25,000 square feet on a single parcel is allowed via the special review, review and approval process. Criteria number two, that the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. The majority of the surrounding area is primarily ag uses with large ag structures. I will note that this will be the largest ag structure in the area, but for the, but the size has been justified and determined to be necessary for the specific purpose that is proposed by the applicant. Criteria number three, the use will be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And staff finds that the proposed use and structure does support guiding principles, policies and goals of the comprehensive plan that are related to protecting and preserving and encouraging active agricultural uses within the county. Criteria number four, the use will not result in an over-intensive use of land or excessive depletion of natural resources. The proposed structure is not changing the intensity of the parcel's use. This training that is proposed to take place in the indoor arena already takes place on the parcel. It just takes place outside right now. And moving the proposed structure to its currently proposed location, which is clustered with the existing development is intended to minimize impacts to the land. And criteria number nine, the use will be adequately buffered or screened to mitigate any undue visual impacts of the use. As we saw with the renderings and the Google street view, the proposed structure will be visible from both Nywha Road and North 55th Street. And I'll note that any structure that is to be, that is proposed on the subject parcel will likely be visible from both of those view protection corridors. And in order to mitigate those visual impacts, staff has recommended conditions of approval requiring a landscape plan that would include the planting of trees along the northern and eastern facade of the proposed structure in order to break up the massing and the bulk of the structure as well as if indoor lighting is proposed for the structure, that the upper story windows be treated with light blocking treatments so that after dark, no light will escape from those windows. And so for the reasons described above and as detailed in the staff recommendation, I'm sorry, community planning and permitting staff recommends that the planning commission recommend conditional approval of docket SU-18-0017, the Toynton Riding Arena, subject to the 13 conditions of approval listed in the staff recommendation. And I do have those recommended conditions of approval if you would like to see them for discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Summer. Any questions for Summer at this point, commissioners?
This is Commissioner Libby. I had a question about, you mentioned about the current use not changing, basically meaning the number of people that would be on site is the same as already training there outdoors. I didn't hear anything about any events in the arena, so I assume that's not part of the proposal. What are the limitations on kind of people on site and events that are already part of the zoning for that site, if any?
So there are no events associated with this site and you are correct. This is the application materials and in conversation with the property owner and his agent, the intent is for this arena to be used privately by the property owner for their training.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, I would ask the applicant, is the applicant present?
They are.
And would you like to make a?
This is Elizabeth Smith, yes, the applicant?
Yes. Would you like to, would you like to make a presentation?
No, not at this time. I think Summer did a great job. We're basically just here to answer any specific questions if it got to that point, maybe something that Summer needed a little backup on, so we're fine at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any questions directed to the applicant? I have one. Summer spoke about light blocking treatments if there was, if there were lighting in the, in the upper area. Have you, do you have any more specifics on that of what you intend to do and when would there be light emitted from that area?
My guess is that it probably would not have, nobody would be up there after dark. It's, we put the, the label on there as office, it's as much storage as it is office and it's a viewing area for when they are actually working the horses so they can kind of train them and see what's going on up there. But of course, we, we could very well and we would submit it to the county if need be, put blackening blinds on there that, you know, when you leave the facility and turn off the light, they automatically closed or something along those lines. We'd be happy to do that.
I think, I think that would be great, just in case, excuse me, just in case, you know, they were particularly, I'm thinking in the wintertime when it gets dark so early that they might be there in the arena, someone might be there and there would be light perhaps being emitted.
Right, okay, noted.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Okay. Again, hearing none. Do we have any members of the public who have signed up to speak? Or are there any members of the public who have not yet signed up but who would like to speak? Again, hearing none.
There's one in the chat, actually.
There is one?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Go, go ahead.
You know, I think I was muted. I was talking along and you couldn't hear me.
Oh, okay.
Of course, we're doing all these crazy Zoom meetings and Microsoft Teams and finally I get zoomed down and you guys are doing Teams.
So if, if you could please identify yourself by your name and give us your address and then go ahead and make the comments.
You bet. My name is Beth Potter. My husband Dan Moore and I are building a residential property right next door to them on the, to the Bill and Janie Jill Springson on the west side at 5050 Nywhaht Road. And so we just want to say that we support this location and we support the riding arena. We think Bill and Janie Jill are great neighbors and that's a great parcel to put a riding arena on. I didn't know that it was the largest agricultural building because the one right across the street from us to the north also is maybe, well, I guess you would know better, but we were just told when we bought the property that we're on, that the one directly north of us is the largest. So we, we're definitely supportive.
Great, thank you very much. Are there, is there anyone else, other members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Okay. Any further questions for Summer or Summer, any further statements you'd like to make?
I don't have any, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners? Further discussion, questions?
I don't have any questions. I would just, I would just say that I appreciate the staff and the applicant really working collaboratively to find the best location for the structure and also the willingness to, to bring the scale down a little bit to something that's more representative of the adjacent area. So I do appreciate the work that was done by staff and the applicant. That said, I am in favor of approving the application.
This is Leishen Gargano. You took the words right out of my mouth.
Mark Bloomfield, same.
If there are no other questions or comments, would anyone like to make a motion?
Sorry, I have, I have one question.
Sure.
I was reading through something online, this is Commissioner Libby, question for Summer. One of the conditions lists around this certificate of occupancy. I just had the chance to look that up and it seems like it maybe doesn't apply to agricultural structures as there's no residents within that. I wasn't sure if that's accurate or should be in there or you have a comment on that?
I think that's because there's an office indicated on, in the structure.
So it's a commercial structure basically or something not agricultural?
That is, so I mentioned that the Chief Building Official's referral response talked about a code evaluation associated with the structure and said that would be part of, and that's.
I see. To assess which code applies. Okay, understood. Thank you. Sorry, let's carry on.
No.
Any, anything else from any of the commissioners?
This is Mark Bloomfield. I'm happy to make a motion if nobody has anything.
Great.
I move that Planning Commission conditionally approve and recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve SU-18-0017, the Twynton Riding Arena, as described in the revised application materials, subject to the, I believe, 12 conditions, 13 conditions in the staff packet.
This is Leishen Gargano and I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Mark Bloomfield?
Aye.
Sam Fitch?
Aye.
Leishen Gargano?
Aye.
Anne Goldfarb?
Aye.
Sam Libby?
Aye.
Gavin McMillan?
Aye.
Melanie Nuske?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Summer.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, the applicant. Okay. We now have, let's see. Find my next docket item here. This is the, the Nywhaht parking lot. And I don't have the num, wait, let me see if I can find it here, hold on. If anyone has the number on their screen right now, if you could jump in. Let's see.
It's SU-14-0014.
Great, thank you. And do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Molly Marcuselli, I'm here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. And can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Okay, good afternoon. This is Molly Marcuselli with Community Planning and Permitting. I am presenting docket SU-19-0014, Nywhaht Business Association Parking Lot. And so a quick overview of the project. The request is for a special use review to allow for the construction of a 50 space multimodal parking facility to be developed in phases on an as-needed basis and no structures are proposed. The subject property is located on the west side of Murray Street at the intersection of Third Avenue and Murray Street in Nywhaht. And it's about two acres and it's a rural residential. The property owner is Boulder County and the applicant is Bruce Warren of the Nywhaht Business Association. And this is a, just a quick vicinity map, so like I said, it's located in Nywhaht. Just a vacant parcel that runs parallel to the diagonal highway. Here's a closer up and downtown Nywhaht is just sort of southeast of this property down Second Ave. And here's an aerial map. It's a vacant parcel located next to the BNSF Railway and then the diagonal highway as well. And so looking at the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan Layers, there are ag lands of national importance on the property. And there is a view protection corridor associated with the diagonal highway, but our resource, Natural Resource Planner doesn't have any major concerns about the ag lands being impacted on this property. And so this was the initial site plan that the applicant submitted. They are working with our Engineering Development Review Team to refine the details and ensure that it will be compliant. But they essentially want to do it in three phases on an as-needed basis. So the first phase would consist of 14 spaces. You can see the handicap parking there. And on the north side of the, the parking lot, there are, they plan to have cones set up to block off any, any parking into the vacant parcel that's not developed, but they will open that up for event parking, for overflow parking. And the proposed second phase would be 26 spaces. And again, they have the cones blocking off the event parking unless they need it. And then the third phase would be 50 spaces. And like I said, in, in this site plan, you may notice that there are some details missing such as landscaped islands and the EV charging stations and bike parking, but the, the applicant is working with our Engineering Development Review Team to ensure that all those details are, are added in. And these are just a few photos. I have some taken in the spring and some in the winter, so they'll look a little different. But this is standing on the subject property looking north. Looking north again and to the west is the, the railroad. And this is looking east along Murray Street to the residences. Looking east. This is looking south, standing on the property. South. And this is looking west across the highway. So these are the referral agencies we heard back from. The Boulder County Building Safety and Inspection Services Team are requiring any applicable building permits, plan review and inspection approvals for any electrical work or other utility work. A grading permit will be required for any grading work over 50 cubic yards. Boulder County Parks and Open Space Natural Resource Planner did have some concerns about the impacts to the view protection corridor, what materials would be used for the parking lot, the proximity of the, the parking lot to the railroad tracks and is requesting screening on both the east and west sides of the property. The Boulder County Engineering Development Review Team is requiring that the lot design complies with the multimodal transportation standards, ADA standards. They're requiring bike parking and EV stations on the lot as well as 5% interior landscaping in the lot. The BNSF Railway would like to see any drainage or fencing plans. They're recommending fencing on the east side of the subject property and are requesting a permit and access agreement if required, but the applicant does not plan on encroaching onto the BNSF property. XL Energy, CDOT, Mountain View Fire Rescue and the Nywhaht Business Association all responded with no conflict. And we heard back from a little over 35 adjacent property owners. Those who are in support emphasized that they're, they do feel there is a need for parking in Nywhaht and that this project would help address that. And they do feel that opening up the parking downtown would help boost the, the business in the downtown area as well. Those who were in opposition had some concerns about the overall process of purchasing the property and community involvement in the, in the process. They feel that there's not really a need to formalize the parking area since it's already being used as a parking area for typically for overflow parking during events. Some comments had referred to using RTDs, their plans to expand their park and rides in the area, using that as an alternative to this parking lot. There were many concerns about negative impacts to the mountain view. They don't feel there's really a need for parking in Nywhaht. There were some concerns about the lot creating some pedestrian and traffic safety issues, concerns about loss of rural character of Nywhaht and loss of property value, especially with the adjacent homes. All right, so getting into the special use review criteria. Number one, the use will comply with the minimum zoning requirements. Parking lots are allowed in rural residential zoning through the SU process. Number two, the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. No structures are proposed on this lot. There will be vegetative screening from Murray Street and landscaped islands in the lot. Because the, the subject property is already really flat, there's going to be minimal grading. The lot will be adjacent to a commercial area and the diagonal highway as well as it'll, it'll be near the parking ride as well. And there are community events that are occurring in Nywhaht that require parking and so this lot would help address that. Number three, the use will be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. These are just some policies that we found that support the project. Number four, the use will not result in an over-intensive use of land or excessive depletion of natural resources. We find that as condition, the project does meet this criteria. The view protection corridor associated with the diagonal highway is considered a natural resource, but there, there are measures being taken to mitigate those impacts such as the vegetative screening. And the use will not have a material adverse impact on community capital improvement programs. Number six, the use will not require a level of community facilities and services greater than that which is available. We do not anticipate that. And Nywhaht, the semi-rural character of Nywhaht can accommodate this kind of use. Number seven, the use will support a multimodal transportation system and not result in negative impacts to the transportation system. So the intent is to increase available parking near the downtown businesses and open it up for, for patrons. Bike parking and electric vehicle charging stations will be required on the lot. We are encouraging any potential collaboration with CDOT. We are requiring ADA access and requesting some sort of pedestrian connection from the lot to the commercial area. This lot also has the potential to serve as a community lot, which would help meet parking requirements for non-residential projects in the Nywhaht Rural Community District. Number eight, the use will not cause significant air, odor, water or noise pollution. As condition, this can be met. We will require a stormwater quality permit if the disturbance area is over one acre and there may be some impacts from construction, but they will be temporary. The use will be adequately buffered or screened to mitigate any undue visual impacts of the use. And the applicant has been working with all of the residents along Murray Street to ensure that they're addressing all of their concerns and they're, they're helping with the design of the lot. So there will be vegetative screening, downlit lighting, no structures. And they plan to angle the parking spots so that they don't shine. Headlights into residences.
Excuse me, Molly, just one, just one second.
Sure.
We have, I think we have a member of the public who is on this call and you're not muted. If you could please mute your microphone so that we can just hear the presenter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number 10, the use will not be detrimental to health, safety or welfare of the present or future Boulder County inhabitants. And as conditioned, we feel this can be met. Number 11, the use will establish an appropriate balance between current and future economic environment, environmental and societal needs. The intent is to allow for more patron parking downtown and, and to enhance the economic vitality of Nywhaht. Nywhaht is also considered a community service area, which can Niwot is also considered a community service area which can accommodate this type of development. Number 12, no natural hazards were identified. Number 13, the proposed use shall not alter historic drainage patterns and/or flow rates. The applicant plans to use permeable materials for the lot. And there's going to be minimal grading. And so, I'm just gonna quickly go through the multimodal parking facility provisions in Article 4-513, which also apply to this project. So, A, this use is not required to be located on a building lot or comply with the minimum lot size requirement for the district in which it is located. We do find the subject property is eligible for this use. Parking for uses on open space parcels shall not require review under this section. The subject property is not located on an open space parcel. The parking facility must meet all applicable provisions of the Boulder County Multimodal Transportation Standards. And the final design will be reviewed for compliance with these standards. D, electric vehicle service equipment, or EVSE, must be provided for new or expanded parking lots that total 15 or more parking spaces. And the applicant does plan to install EVSE either during the first or second phase depending on funding. And onsite installation may not be required if a more suitable location is appropriate. At this time, the applicant does plan to install EVSE onsite. A Level 2 or Level 3 EVSE is required for the first 15 spaces. If no Level 3 is installed, then for each additional 25 parking spaces, one additional Level 2 is required. But if a Level 3 is installed, then no additional charging station is required. And these standard requirements will be determined prior to permitting during the final design review. And parking spaces with an EVSE shall be designated for electrical vehicle charging. And stations are required to register with an electric vehicle charging information network. The applicant is working with staff from the Office of Sustainability, Climate Action, and Resiliency to work out logistics and funding, so these should be met as well. E, internal traffic circulation systems shall be designed to mitigate conflicts between vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian traffic. And this will be evaluated by staff during the review of final design prior to permitting. For lots with 50 or more parking spaces, interior landscaping must cover at least 5% of the parking area. And the proposal does intend to meet that requirement through the landscaped islands within the lot. G, lighting shall comply with Article 7-1600, outdoor lighting of the Land Use Code. And these restrictions and requirements will be determined during permit application review. Stormwater management plan or drainage plan is required for final design and construction. And these will be reviewed and approved. And a stormwater quality permit, if it's required, will be obtained as well. Rideshare requirements will be determined during review. Depending on the location used to the multimodal parking facility, designated parking spots for rideshare vehicles may be required. So, we're not requiring designated rideshare spaces during the first phase of development. But as it expands, we will work with the Niwot Business Association to determine whether or not those are warranted. And so, that leads me to the recommendation. For the reasons described above and as detailed in the staff recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend conditional approval of Docket SU-19-0014, Niwot Business Association parking lot, subject to the conditions found in the staff recommendation. And I also have the conditions listed in the following slides if you'd like to discuss them.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions at this point for Molly?
This is Lucien Gargano. I have a question about, you said that those opposed were opposed particularly on the purchase of the property and public involvement. Can you just dig into that a little bit more to help me understand that?
Sure. And the applicant may be able to speak to this as well. But my understanding was the property was purchased with LID funds with the intention of creating a parking lot. And there was, I believe, a public hearing to approve this purchase. But some residents feel that they didn't know about it. And so, they were a little, they just felt like they were involved in that process.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the suggestion to follow up with the applicant.
Other questions at this point?
This is Commissioner Neskey. I have a question for you, Molly. Do you know roughly how many public comments were submitted in approval versus opposed?
I don't know the exact number, but if I had to estimate, it would probably be around 30 were opposed and maybe five or so were approved of.
And one more question regarding the phasing. What would trigger the next phase? What would be required to trigger the next phase of the build-out? And would that come back for a review, or who would review the next phase?
I don't know that the triggers for initiating the next phase have been detailed yet. But we are, basically, we're trying to approve all 50 spaces right now, so they would not have to come back for approval. But I don't think we have details outlined yet about what the triggers will be. There have been transportation studies in the past for Niwot. And I think there's a Niwot connectivity and transportation plan. And I think some triggers are outlined in that plan. And so, my guess is that we would maybe refer to that, to that plan.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I have a couple of questions, Molly. Around height and just appearance. As far as lighting is concerned, I know that you said that they would be the kind of downlighting. Is there any indication of how tall the light posts would be? Are we talking like kind of two or three feet, or are we talking taller than that?
I don't have an exact height of the light posts, but the applicant may have more information on that.
Okay. And then, I guess the same question on fencing along the railroad. That be best for the applicant as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Libby had a couple of questions. How is a parking lot like this kind of maintained from an ownership perspective? So, things like snowplow and trash removal, security. People mentioned, you know, what if an RV parks there, et cetera. Who's responsible for that?
This was a concern that was brought up in a few of the public comments. Someone, feel free to chime in if I'm wrong, but I believe maintenance will be funded through LID funds. But as far as other management, I'm not sure.
What does LID stand for?
Local Improvement District.
Okay. Is anybody else from staff who can speak to that question?
This is Abby Shannon. I'm the interim long-range planning division manager. I'm not sure that we can speak to that right now, but it's something that we can look into before it goes to the Board of County Commissioners to figure out specifically what the maintenance looks like. And if there's overnight parking that becomes a concern, I think that's a really good question, and we'll look into that.
Okay, thanks, Abby. Yeah, my interest is out of, that's part of the collation of public comment. I think if there's clear definition around that, it might put some people at ease about some of those topics. Not all of the topics certainly, but at least on those. My other question for Molly, this may be the same answer, but there was also discussion around number of parking spaces that are available or often in use throughout Niwot. I think in my research and looking around street view for this docket, there's quite a bit of informal parking that happens in the built-up area, as well as quite a bit of existing street parking. And I think we haven't seen, as part of the application, a study that indicates that there is an issue with parking capacity right now. So, I would, I guess, suggest that either if there is something, that that be included in the packet for the county commissioners or that let's nail this look into, because I think that's one of the premises of the application. Being that there's not enough parking is not clearly shown through that application.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I have a question in regard to the landscaping. And I noticed that number nine, condition number nine indicates interior landscaping must cover at least 5% of the parking area for surface lots with 50 or more automotive parking spaces. Is there anything required or planned before they hit the 50-space number?
So, my understanding is that 5% of the whole lot with the 50 spaces would have to be landscaped. And I think that's something that would be detailed in the design review that the applicant's going to work with our Engineering Development Review Team on. So, I'm not sure what the landscaping would look like during the first phase with the 14 spaces.
Okay. I would like to see some landscaping if there is space available to do that, even when they begin just with the 14 spaces. And I don't know if any other commissioners have any opinions about that or not.
This is Lucien Gargano. It's hard to tell without the plan being in place yet, you know, as far as we know they're going to work on it. But yeah, maybe when we talk to the applicant, we can ask about just what that would look like in phases.
That sounds, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the applicant is definitely willing to add the landscaping. And I think Stormwater may have a little bit more information on the design of it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McMillan, just one question about the existing zoning. It's rural residential, I believe. What types of uses and, I guess, height are permitted by right in that zone district? I assume they're residential, but what types of things could go here other than a parking lot, out of curiosity? And do you know the height limitation?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Again, Abby Shannon might know that. But yeah, I believe it's just low-density residential. I'm not sure of the other uses. Maybe Abby knows that.
I can help out with that. So, in general, rural residential is going to allow residential uses. It's also going to allow open agricultural uses. The max height is going to be 30 feet. But for the electric lighting, for like parking lot lighting, the max height is 12 feet.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Abby.
And I will just piggyback on Ann's question. I guess I read that the landscaping is required at 50 spaces, which ultimate build-out of this parking lot is 50. But, and I can wait to get this answer until we hear from the applicant. But I wonder what the interim landscaping plan is before you get to that 50-space trigger. I'll ask that question again of the applicant, but I share your question, Ann.
Right. Other questions at this time? If not, if the applicant is available, would they like to make a statement at this point? If you could, could you please identify yourself by name and give us your address before you begin to speak?
Yes, my name is Bruce Warren. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Bruce Warren. I live at 7321 Dry Creek Road in Niwot, Colorado. I've been a resident of Niwot for 45 years and have had a business in Niwot, a law office for 45 years. I'm also the managing editor of Lefthand Valley Courier, which has published a newspaper in Niwot for 23 years. I am the agent for both of the applicants. And that involves Boulder County, which owns the property, as well as the Niwot Business Association, which is a nonprofit organization formed many years ago to promote the businesses in Niwot. I should mention too that I'm also a member of the Niwot Local Improvement District Advisory Committee. Just so you know how that operates, since 2008, we have a nine-member advisory committee made up of residents, property owners, business owners in Niwot. There's a broad cross-section of the community. I have served on that LID advisory committee since its inception in 2008. With me today also is Chuck Kleber, and I'll let him introduce himself later. But Chuck is the Streetscapes Manager for the Niwot Business Association, or what we often refer to as the NBA. I'm also the president of the Niwot Cultural Arts Association, which we refer to as the NCAA. And that organization, along with the NBA, operates the Rock and Rails Concert Series in the summer at Whistlestop Park, which is approximately a block and a half from this parking lot location, and which is often referred to in the materials for event parking. So, just a little history to start with of the parking lot. Business owners in Niwot have been looking at this issue for many years, back to the 1990s at least. Tim Wise, if not, Wise Buys Antiques, has materials going back to 2004 when we were trying to come up with a parking solution for downtown Niwot. Downtown Niwot is a historic district, so most of the buildings are wall-to-wall, just as you would expect in an old historic district, which doesn't allow for a lot of onsite parking. And so, on-street parking is mostly what's available for the block that's closest to this parking lot. We did a transportation and connectivity study in 2012 at the request of the LID. And I served on that committee as well as several people from Niwot, most of whom were not business owners. People like Laura Skads, Will Henshaw, who lived in Old Town, Kathy Kaler, who lives in Morton Heights, and Tim Wise, who both lives in Niwot and does have a business there. And as a result of that connectivity study, the need for a parking lot that could serve downtown Niwot was identified at that time. So, we have been officially searching for a plot that would serve that purpose since then. In 2017, we were able to contact Burlington Northern, which we had been trying to do for years. We finally reached someone in their real estate office to talk to us. And we were able to put together a contract. And the county of Boulder, with LID funding of $190,000, purchased this property for the express purpose of creating a parking lot to serve downtown Niwot. One of the things that comes up often in Niwot, because it's a small community and has a small business district, it's surrounded by open space. The business district is not going to grow by anything substantial. And there is a phrase called "critical mass" that Tony Santelli, who used to be the president of the NBA, uses often. And basically, that means that you have to have a certain number of And basically, that means that you have to have a certain number of businesses that are thriving for all businesses to thrive and for it to be an attractive place. And the people who live in Niwot, as well as the business owners, appreciate that fact, and they appreciate having a vibrant downtown Niwot. So we have viewed this as an important piece in developing that critical mass and keeping Niwot's downtown area vibrant. Obviously, we've been hit hard with the COVID restrictions, and the business community has suffered from that, but even before that, at one time, we had Colterra Restaurant, 1914 House, downtown restaurants that draw a lot of people to Niwot. Since Colterra closed several years ago due to a fire, that property has still remained vacant, but it's still being offered as a restaurant. When you drive down Niwot's Second Avenue, if you drive down during a time when people are out to eat, people are visiting stores, it's often hard to find even one parking space. And as somebody asked, there have been parking studies done, they were done on a yearly basis, and they indicated that there was a need for parking in downtown Niwot. One of the things we found, though, when we looked at the study was, when they were doing percentages, they were counting parking spaces in the back of the buildings that no one in the public knows exist. And so the percentage was actually lower for use, based on the study, than actually was the perception by anybody who drove down Second Avenue in Niwot. The, another business that was vacant for a long time was Powder Cave Brewery, which is on the corner of Second Avenue and Murray Street. That is now occupied by Niwot Wheel Works just recently, and they have applied for a liquor license, because they want to also serve beer and wine at what's formerly the Powder Cave. So as that gets going, we anticipate that that will bring even more people to downtown Niwot and contribute to the vibrancy of the business district. Back when we purchased the property, this went through a public hearing before the county commissioners, and there has been a lot of public discussion, public hearings, LID hearings. There's been coverage of this in the Left Hand Valley Courier every time it comes up. So for people to say that they didn't have an opportunity or didn't know about it, that just tells me they weren't paying attention at the time, because there have been many opportunities in the past. Sometimes those folks have taken advantage of those opportunities and presented their views, and we have listened to them. After the purchase, we met with the neighbors along Murray Street and tried to come up with a design that would mitigate any impacts to them specifically, and we incorporated many of their suggestions in the design that we've put together. For example, the parking lot is located on the end of the parcel that's farthest towards the business district and away from the residential area. Again, we have proposed to do this in phases. The phases would be triggered by two things. One is the demand for the use, as we perceive it, based on the parking lot use. The second is the ability to fund any expansion with LID funds, because right now, the LID collects a 1% sales tax, and those revenues are expected to decline sharply for the next year at least. So that's a consideration in how we might expand the parking lot in the future. We also have submitted drafts of the proposal that you've seen to the neighbors for their comments before they were submitted to you, and we have, again, incorporated some of their recommendations. For example, originally, we were going to put a fence along Murray Street, because we thought that would be appropriate. They requested that it be a hedge instead, so that's part of the landscaping, and I think that's in your packet with some other landscaping, but where it shows a fence, that will actually be a hedge, so that will screen the view of the cars, and they'll be looking at a hedge, and above that, the mountains. So that's just an example of one of the things that we incorporated into the design to mitigate The other thing I wanted to say was that parking lot use is allowed now in rural residential. The code was specifically changed as a result of requests from people in Niwot to allow parking use, because there did not appear to be one, other than the park-and-ride, which doesn't really fit this particular use. So that was changed several years ago, so that when we did have a parking lot parcel, we could actually develop it as a parking lot. And the one other thing that we've learned in this process is that it's an opportunity to promote electric vehicle use. We originally made the first phase 14, because a parking charging station wasn't required. In the meantime, we have gone ahead and applied for grants that Boulder County has assisted us with. We've already obtained one grant, we have another application pending, and with those grants, we'll be able to fund a needed parking station, which we think is then an attraction to people driving electric vehicles along the diagonal, to know that they can come to Niwot, stop, charge their vehicle, shop, eat at a restaurant, and that promotes sustainable energy uses. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chuck Kleber, and then at the end, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
This is Chuck Kleber. I live at 8206 Sawtooth Lane in Niwot. Been a Niwot resident for over 32 years. My wife owns an interior design business in Niwot, and as such, I'm a member of the Niwot Business Association with my wife's business. As Biff mentioned, I am the Streetscapes representative. I did put together an updated design that I'd like to show, that I think is going to answer an awful lot of the questions that were asked before Biff talked here. So we're going to try to display it here, so bear with us while we work on getting this displayed. We want to share a document, so we're going to give it a shot here.
I'm wondering if it's possible for Molly to share that. Is it easier for you to share it, Molly? It's the revision three, or do we have permission to share?
You can share, but I'm happy to do it. I have it up and ready to go.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, Molly?
Okay.
This cover, cover page here is an example of, we're just trying to show what design considerations we're taking into consideration, design requirements we took into consideration. Biff mentioned a bit of them, and some of those were mentioned during the planning commissioner's input here earlier on, but we want to minimize the obstruction of the Murray Street residents' view to the west. We've changed the design from the presentation that you saw earlier to a 60-degree diagonal parking. Now, with this type of a design, cars that park, their headlights shine directly west, there's no headlights shining to the east into any of the homes. We're planning on using dark sky compliant lighting. The posts are bollard-style posts that are about three and a half feet tall, that incorporate solar lighting individually, and each of the posts themselves. Plan to start off with a 14-size car lot, and as Biff mentioned, and then gradually increase that in size. Feedback from the county, we've made allowances for electrical vehicle stations. We also have the ability to open up the north end of the parking lot to an open lot there for large events, mostly the Rock and Rails events for overflow parking. The surface is planning to be a permeable, permeable parking surface for better drainage and water absorption, and the landscaping we're going to do is consistent with the rural character of Niwot. Feedback we also got from residents, some of the residents along Murray Street, was that they would like to see a pedestrian pathway to, for safety features, to avoid conflict with cars, and I can show you, the updated drawing will show that. We can skip over this, that's been covered, that's the location of the lot. This is the multimotor standards, we can skip that part. This is the current thinking for the car parking lot. If we go left to right, there's dimensions on there, and the reason the dimensions are there, to show that we've taken into consideration the multimodal standard dimensions required on the previous page. So if we start left to right, the, what you see are, at the left, there are six parking lots, six parking spaces. The two at the bottom of the page are for handicap cars. The second one up has a handicap vehicle access with its stripes slices next to it. The next four stations are reserved for electric vehicles, and one of them, it would be the one, two, three, the fourth space up from the bottom, is for a handicap electrical vehicle. That's why those stripes are there. So we're allowing for handicap vehicle access and also electrical vehicle access. We've designed it such that there are going to be allowances for two dual-port, level two charging stations. As Biff mentioned, we have submitted two proposals for two grants. The one for the Xcel Electric, Xcel Energy, excuse me, has been approved for installing the infrastructure to support those two dual-port charging stations. If we go, still stay on the left there, there's a yellow space indicated at the bottom, just below the two handicaps. That is space for bicycle parking for, and if you note, there's space there for five bicycles. Five is the 10% of the maximum 50 parking spaces. It also, access to that, the bicycle section there, is from the landscape walking path that's in the front at the, you know, yes, you're pointing, thank you. Yeah, it's along that access there, so people with bicycles don't have to go into the parking lot, they're away from traffic. Other feedback that we got from some of the landscape architects that reviewed this is that we need to have a concrete apron. And other feedback was that needs to be a hard surface for the handicap people, like in wheelchairs, to be able to access from their vehicles out to the pedestrian way. So there, there's a concrete pad shown in gray there that goes all the way to the top, because it connects the handicap parking for the non-electrical vehicles, plus the electrical vehicles. Staying to the left there, right at the far left of that, there are, there's a blue highlighted vertical line, and that line indicates a fencing to hold, to delineate this parking lot. The fencing, originally, we had thought of using split rail type fencing. I'll show a picture later on, but due to feedback from the residents, we felt that putting something in, like posts with a looped chain, would be less visible or less obstructive to the, to the view, so that's what we're thinking now. So cars would access the parking lot from Murray Street, they would pull in, and it'd be one-way, as you come in, you'd go to the right, and as you can see, there's head-in parking with concrete bumpers, so cars that would park there are now, their headlights are facing away from any of the houses on Murray Street. So cars would come in, make a right-hand turn, go down the one-way, there's adequate space there from the, make the turn, come back, and head the other way. So cars parking on the upper part of that parking lot, they would pull in, again, with the bumper, concrete bumpers there, headlights facing away from the houses. The, those little yellow circles there are dark sky compliant, solar lighting, that's what we're looking at for, you know, for lighting the parking lot. The fence there at the back end is a requirement from Burlington Railroad, and so the fence, that fence will be different fence, that will be a split rail type of fencing. Think that's about the major features of that. The length of that parking lot's estimated to be about 118 feet long, as shown on that drawing. If we move to the next drawing, please. Now, this is, this is what a 50-car lot would look like. It's basically adding, the left-hand side would stay the same, so the, there would be six parking spaces there, all for the handicap and electrical vehicles, and then the remaining 40, 44 would be diagonal parking. To the right there, there's a, that would be the access to the overflow parking for event parking there. And we can move to the next slide. So back, if you back up, this is, that, this is meant to show the position of the 14 cars on the total of two-acre site. It would incorporate just a minimal amount there to the left, if we do the 14-car. The maximum 50-car is shown in the next drawing. That's, that's how much of the, about, it looks to me about a third of the two acres would be occupied for parking lots. Next slide, please. This is, this is an artist's rendering we did initially with the, the earlier version that was shown. So this is the type of landscaping we're looking at. If you remove the, the split rail fencing there along Murray Street, that would not be there, we would just have the hedges to, you know, shade the cars. The bollard-style lighting is shown there. I don't know if you can, Molly, if you can see it there, it's, if you look at, that's it, there's a, and then, exactly, right. So that's the height of the type of lighting that we're considering. The parking, the walking path would be right there, along basically where the split rail fences that goes down Murray Street, that rail fencing would be gone, and then the walking path would be in that front area there. And next, oh, the question was about landscaping. So the landscaping would be contiguous, I guess. If we did a 14 lot, parking lot, we would do the 14, 14-space parking lot would be about, what is it, 118 feet along Murray Street there, and then as we expand it, we would just continue the landscaping. Next slide. And this, this is an example of an existing parking lot in Niwot with that concrete bumpers, with the split rail fencing. This is in the Left Hand Valley Ball Field at 83rd and Niwot Road. This parking lot was built by Niwot County. It is, there's 48 spaces there, and it is a permeable surface. It, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at, that style of a parking lot. And I think that may be the end of the presentation. Any questions?
Thanks, Chuck. So we would just ask that you approve the staff's recommendation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions, commissioners?
Lucian Gargano, just a follow-up on that. You know, you mentioned that there was quite a lot of opportunity for public input. Could you give a little more detail as to what Could you give a little more detail as to what that looked like, how the input came in, how you notified people that, that the opportunity existed?
So what was the question as to how we notified people?
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, if we're hearing from neighbors that they felt they didn't know about the opportunity, I would just like to hear more from you about, you know, how you publicized it, right? And, you know, what those opportunities looked like or what those spaces and connection points looked like, a little more detail.
So publication probably started with articles in the Left Hand Valley Courier back in 2017, coverage of the LID meetings. LID meetings are public meetings and they're posted according to law. We do get members of the public that attend LID meetings, the agendas are published in advance. So that happened and when we actually had the contract, there was a hearing before the Boulder County Commissioners, and that was published. The Community Association, Niwot has a very active volunteer organization. The Niwot Community Association deals with matters that affect residential areas as well as the business community. They have been aware of it, they've published in their newsletter that goes out to all of their members, they have a substantial number of members. Public notice requirements were met for notice of the hearing before the county commissioners and people did appear. And as I mentioned before, we did collect emails and phone calls. And these are, many of these people are people I know, they're friends of mine. We emailed them and communicated that way. And then we called a meeting and they came. And Chuck and I met with, I think it was about 10 people from Murray Street in my office to, and that was after the purchase, so that we could get their input into this whole process.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, that was, that meeting was on, August 30th of 2017, that looks like the hearing.
And then I had an additional question about the landscaping. It sounded like you plan on doing the landscaping for the initial 14 spaces and then just add the landscaping and be gross, you won't wait to landscape till the end, you'll do it from the beginning?
Exactly correct.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Libby. Hey guys, thanks for your time today. I wanted to ask about, I guess, how people are going to be made aware of this new parking option. I think a lot of people who come to Niwot already have, you know, their plans of parking on the street or parking on the side street in informal spaces. You know, will there be signage throughout Second Avenue or other streets that will notify them that they need to go around the corner past Excel to this parking lot? Or how will that be made, publicized?
Well, see, we're, we're planning for signage, not only for the parking, but also signage on the diagonal highway showing that there's electrical vehicle station to, so the electrical, EV stations along the diagonal will direct them into Niwot. Once they come in, say through Niwot Road or Second Avenue entrance, then we would be signs showing, you know, parking and directions there. The, the lot itself, you know, will, you know, have handicap and EV spot, each spot will be, have signage there indicating where they are.
One other thing I want to mention about the parking lot use is that we anticipate that maybe 50% of that will be used by employees of the businesses in downtown Niwot. Right now, those employees sometimes park on the street and while it makes it look busy, it's not very inviting to somebody who comes down and can't find a parking space in front of the businesses they wanted to go to. So that will be used not only by members of the public, but also by employees, and that will have the effect of opening up some of the parking along Second Avenue.
Okay, thank you. My second question was around the EV charging. Are there currently, I'm sorry if you mentioned this already, are there currently other EV charging points in Niwot, either along Second Avenue or across by Niwot Market?
No, the closest EV parking station is, that I could find was up by the Niwot Elementary School up in Morton Heights in that area. It's about a mile and a half away.
And there's one in Niwot High School, which is about the same distance, so a mile and a half away from where this area is. There's nothing in downtown Niwot at this point.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb, following up on the issue of landscaping. You indicated that you're going to be using a hedge rather than a fence to screen the cars from the homes, is that right?
That's correct.
What I would like to propose is that, fairly specific in regard to that hedge, because I, we have a project in our neighborhood where there was supposed to be screening for a parking lot. And the plants were planted so far apart and don't grow very tall, so they absolutely provide no screening at all. So I would like to specify that the hedge be of plants that will grow tall enough so that you can't see the cars behind them and planted close enough together so that it does make a dense hedge so that you don't see between the plants as well.
That's absolutely our intention. One other thing I'd like to mention about that, you know, there's no water to this site. There was water at a commercial building that's now occupied by Excel Electric next door. Sometimes we ask to use that, but the Niwot Business Association has a really good track record, thanks to Chuck, of maintaining what we put out there. And that includes flowers throughout Niwot, which again is funded by the LID. And we also fund people that go and water them. So we already have the structure set up to provide for someone to water that hedge, to make sure it grows and to make sure it's tall enough to do exactly what you described.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Fitch? So I, I'm looking at the conditions and I guess I'm not seeing that the landscape plan has to be approved at a particular point before the process goes forward. So the screening question, which seems to be crucial to the neighbors, is being addressed in the conditions, I think it's through number eight, number eight. But there's not much detail and it doesn't look like there's a public discussion of that landscape plan prior to actual permitting of the initial stage. So this is a little bit of a Goldilocks problem. So you've got to have enough plants to meet N's concern about visual impacts through the hedge. But if you put it too big, then you're impacting people's views of the mountains past the cars. So I, it seems like to me, in terms of meeting the conditions and also meeting the public concern, that there ought to be a point at which there's a public discussion of the final landscaping plan. Again, I've got the opposite problem, but it's not a problem for me, that we have private between us and my backyard neighbors. It's very good at screening, but it's probably 20, 25 feet at some portions of that. So the details of the landscaping on both sides seem to really matter to the question of the visual impacts. So if that's the case, then it seems like we need some, some point where people can both learn what the applicant is trying to do, provide input, which is being, I think being accepted now. But an actual decision point where people could say, oh, this is the final plan. So I guess that would be my concern is to have that and also to have some public discussion when there is a decision to be made about the staging of the phases. So in the public comments, we've heard concern about what the criteria are. I assume that's a question of funding on the one hand and evidence of need for additional spaces as you go along. But there needs to be some, some kind of public notice and at least a chance for the public to talk about what's the impact of going to stage two or going to the full 50 spaces. So that's the end of my comments for now.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. I'm wondering if in the conditions, and perhaps as you mentioned Sam, number eight, where they speak to the fact that the lot should be partially screened from, from public view, and if we added language that said something like of the hedge to be planted on, and I'm not sure whether it's north, south, east or west of the side of the lot, but whatever the direction is, that there, that the hedge be appropriate plant material to be tall enough to screen cars, to be tall enough of maturity to screen the view of the cars and planted close enough together, I'm sorry, tall enough of maturity to screen cars, but at maturity, not so tall that it impacts the mountain view. So I guess we're talking, we're getting, we're getting pretty specific about what kinds of plants would, would fit the bill there, but I feel like that's a really important issue to be addressed with the community.
I agree with that.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield, I have a question. Molly, can you put up the, the picture, the satellite picture that shows the phase one? And it has the event parking area adjacent to that, it's page five of our packet, if that helps? Yep. I'm curious what the parking lot right adjacent to it is, if the applicant can speak to that.
That, that space next to it is, there, there's a, a commercial building there, Excel Electric, that is, also housed another business, like my mother's pies, mom's pies, and that's parking for that, that building.
Okay, so that's essentially private parking for that.
That's private parking, correct.
Commissioner McMillan, I have a question, Molly, if you could scroll up to the site plan, the, thank you, right there. The landscaped walking path, this question for the applicant, and it says it's in, in Boulder County right of way, it's a two-part question. One is, what is this walkway made of? Is it concrete or? And then two, and maybe this is for the county, is there coordination where, where this path would be permitted in the right of way, which is off of private property? Is that something that, that is supported and will happen? First question for the applicant, what, what is the material you see using here?
The material is, is basically crusher fines, it's similar to the, the trail ways that we have running through Niwot, there's the Lobo Trail, there's a number of trails that run, you know, through Niwot and it's, it just crusher fines.
I think the concern that I have, looking at this site plan and that path, is you have accessible parking and a concrete pad, which provides an accessible egress, but when those folks get to this walkway, I don't know for certain, but I don't think the crusher fines are ADA acceptable pathway.
No, no, but, but the concrete pad goes over the, the crusher fines there, see there?
Yeah, you see that? So then those folks are in the street or?
That's a street right there, that's Murray Street. But they, well, what you're saying is that, so if they go?
Yeah, I, I, I commend you for having accessible parking, I think it's absolutely necessary and you do, I just, I have concerns with ADA and accessibility laws when.
So let me speak to that a minute. I think that crusher fines actually are permissible ADA, if you meet their requirements. And I know that because we've recently built a building at Whistle Stop Park, which is a block away. And one of the conditions for building that was put in in an ADA accessible path. We had a crusher fines path there already, but we hadn't gotten compaction testing to meet that criteria. Instead, what we did was we replaced it with concrete. But they were telling us that we could do crusher fines, it just was more trouble than it was worth to do that. In this particular case, it may be that up to the left, where you see the concrete pad, to the left of that, we may make that concrete as well. Partially, it's going to depend on what happens with the Excel Electric building, which is to the left of the parking lot. That building was recently sold. My understanding is Excel Electric plans to move out of there and the new owners plan to redevelop that property. So hopefully they would continue the path of the sidewalk in whatever form, whether it's asphalt, concrete or crusher fines down to Second Avenue, so that people wouldn't have to cross the street right there to get to a sidewalk.
Got it, thank you for the explanation.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb, I just looked up the ADA accessibility guidelines and they indicate that crusher fines are acceptable, but it needs to be bonded with synthetic materials that can provide the required degree of stability and firmness.
Thanks, yeah, that's, that's helpful and good to know. I, I don't, I don't know that I'm interested in designing this pathway, but I do think it needs to be of an accessible material and perhaps now the conditions of approval could reflect that.
We're happy to do whatever makes the most sense, whether it's concrete or crusher fines. You know, like I said before, we live and work here, we want to make this attractive and useful.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thanks. Follow-up question, I guess, for staff, county staff. Is the county amenable to having this, this path in, in the right of way? Is that something that you're going to work with the applicant on or is that TBD still at this point in time?
We had requested that they include some sort of pedestrian connection enhancements, which could definitely be a sidewalk right there. But that's something they would work with our engineering team on and it hasn't been decided on yet.
Okay, but, but the concept is, is, is it go, it's just the details, okay. That's all very good to hear. Thank you, that's, that's all my questions.
Any other questions for the applicant? In that case, I think we can move to public comment. And it looks like we have three people who have signed up for a public comment. So any members of the public who will have a chance to speak, and even if you didn't sign up from the Planning Commission homepage beforehand, once those who've signed up in advance have spoken, we'll ask whether there are any additional members of the public who would like to speak. If you joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address and the docket number in the chat box to the right. If you dial into the meeting via phone, unmute yourself with star six and state your desire to speak. We will then add your name to the list in the chat box and proceed in that order. When it's your turn to speak, unmute yourself by clicking the microphone button on the bottom of the Teams bar, or if on the phone, push star six and then state your name and address for the record. Timing system has been established. Timing system has been established. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Those wishing to speak can pool time at three minutes per person for a maximum of 10 minutes. You'll need to provide the names and addresses of other people, up to three others besides yourself, who are in attendance and donating their time to you. Anyone who is pooling time will need to attend the virtual hearing so we can verify their presence as we would at an in-person hearing. Please do not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. The chat box should be used for public hearing, speaker sign up only. Please remain on mute when possible. Members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. Applicants, please have your presentations pulled up and ready to go. I guess we don't need to say that at this point. Okay, so we have people signed up to comment, and the first name we have on the list is Galen Scheidenhelm. Is Galen present? Okay, we'll go to the next name on the list, Anne Postle. Oh, is this Galen?
Yes, I'm sorry, I must have been unmuted, pressed star six and muted myself.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, if you could identify yourself and give us your address, and then go ahead, you have three minutes for your comment.
Sure, thank you, I'll be brief. My name's Galen Scheidenhelm. I am a resident in Niwot. I live at 520 Murray Street, about two blocks north of the subject property, and I am a local business owner as well. I have two kids, and I am on the executive board of Niwot U-Sports and run their baseball program. My, my concerns with the property are mostly safety oriented, and I'd just like to say thank you to the applicants for incorporating the walkway into the design. That was my chief concern. As of right now, most families downtown use that grass parcel to walk downtown. There are no, there are no sidewalks on either Murray or Franklin Street, so that's how we get down to those businesses. And with that parking lot without a walkway, it would put us in harm's way, either with cars in the parking lot or on the street. So that's very important to me. I would also ask that we go even further. Due to the increased pedestrian traffic and car traffic with the proposed parking lot, it would make sense to me to think about a four-way stop sign at Second Avenue and the Murray Street, as well as stop signs for eastern, excuse me, for western-facing traffic on Third, Fourth, and Fifth Avenue. You just have sort of a powder keg situation, that cars coming from east to west, turning in toward the parking lot with cars coming out of the parking lot with pedestrians walking down to Rockin' Rails or TruRidge Restaurants. It's, it's a lot going on, and stop signs would do a lot to remediate that safety concern. And that's really my only concern. I just want to make sure kids have a safe way to walk downtown and get to the Niwot Children's Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Postle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Anne Postle, 8392 Niwot Meadow Farm Road. I also own the building at 290 Second Avenue that is Osmosis Art and Architecture. So I've owned a business in, on Second Avenue for, well, since 2004, and an art gallery, an art gallery on Second Avenue for 11 years now. This parking lot is something that we have been hoping for and working for, for literally decades. Parking is really important. If you drive in Niwot today, and I will tell you that things are very slow, they've been very slow for the last couple of months, but you will still see so many cars parked because the parking spaces on Second Avenue are currently used by employees, and the employees, many of them are still working. What that does is around lunchtime, there isn't a place for our customers and our visitors to Niwot to find a place to park. So I'm very hopeful that this parking area will allow a place for businesses to send their employees to park, which opens up the space on the street for our visitors and our customers, so that Niwot is a really friendly place that can say, we're open for business, and you should come and go to our restaurants and visit our galleries. That's all I have. I hope you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Simic. Is Stephen present? And if you are, make sure you unmute yourself.
I see a note from Stephen in the chat box that he had to leave the meeting, but he added a section in the chat box for what he wanted to say. He was for it.
All right. Is there anyone else who has not signed up but would like to speak?
Yes, my name is Eric Bergerson. I'd like an opportunity to speak, please.
Yeah, if you could, again, identify yourself and give us your address, please, and you have three minutes.
Sure, my name is Eric Bergerson. I live at 9914 Niwot Road. I also own Niwot Wheel Works at 101 Second Avenue, right in the corner of Murray and Second Avenue. I've, I'm also president of the Niwot Business Association. I've owned a business, I've lived here in Niwot for 20 years, raised a family. I've owned a business in downtown Niwot for three years now. We just moved our bike shop from across the street at 124 Second Avenue to our new location here. And I strongly urge the Planning Commission to approve this project. I think it's essential for business in downtown Niwot. Niwot's sort of a community of contradictions, and I think parking is no exception to that. You know, if you come around here on a Thursday evening, it looks like a Broncos game, you can't find parking anywhere. Obviously, in the summer, that's due to Rockin' Rails. If you come around here on, you know, a Sunday afternoon, you could probably have your own football game on Second Avenue and not get interrupted. But it's really the times in between that, that we have most of our problems from a business perspective. If you come around here on a Tuesday like today, or Wednesday, although things are a little bit different right now because of COVID, but, you know, at three or four in the afternoon, as Nick at 1914 House is starting to open up, and more of the restaurants are opening up, it's really difficult for people to find a parking space out on Second Avenue. I've had multiple customers come in frustrated at five or 5:30 in the evening, coming to pick up a bike, and not being able to park anywhere, and having to park, you know, two blocks away. And it's a little scary from a business perspective. We keep people saying, you know, well, you know, why do we come down here? We might as well go into Boulder if we're going to run these kind of parking issues. So I, I think it's really important that we create, or that we, that we build this parking lot. I think it'll also add to a little more organized traffic flows and parking throughout Niwot. Right now, if we run out of spaces on Second Avenue, people are forced to park, you know, on Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, in front of houses and so forth, and I think we'll see less of that if we have a parking lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak on this docket number? All right, hearing no further presentations from the public, I'll open it up to commissioners for any further questions to staff or applicant and discussion.
I don't have any further questions. I do feel like the applicant has done a pretty good job to talk with the neighbors and, and help mitigate their concerns. I think we've definitely heard from the business community that this is important. I certainly understand the, you know, resistance of residents to having a parking lot. It does seem like the fact, A, that it's adjacent to another parking lot, and the fact that it'll be screened certainly mitigates my, my concerns there. In fact, I kind of wonder with the screening if, you know, instead of looking at the diagonal with the mountains above, you're actually looking at screening with mountains above, which would be more pleasant. So I'd say, you know, overall, in favor of the project.
Other comments from any of the commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Libby. No other questions right now, I'll just kind of put my thoughts out there for you guys. I think I would agree with, with Mark on the visual concerns and those things being pretty well mitigated. I'm not personally convinced of the need for the parking lot, I think is my concern, and not that that's a reason to not do it, but more that I'm concerned that it's the kind of thing that would be built and very rarely used in the current situation. The distance from the street, well, only a block and a half, it is at the far end of Second Avenue, where people are coming off diagonal and driving straight onto Second Avenue looking for parking. There's a lot of informal street parking that happens in Niwot. There's very limited, limited restrictions on street parking, I mean, that almost every street allows it and doesn't deny it. And so I'm just concerned that people would just choose the closest spot, which would be on a grass median right in front of, off, off of the street before they get to the parking lot. What's the advantage of being there? The electrical vehicle parking is pretty appealing, I will say, and it feels to me as though this is kind of already well in motion via the purchase with the county and the approval and the many years of discussion. I do find the business district's arguments pretty compelling on their interest in this. So I guess I'm mixed on the need for it, but I'm able to support it if others agree that it's necessary. I haven't heard the evidence I think I'd want to see around parking being really exhausted other than anecdotal responses from those who are in favor of it.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Sam, if, if it might help your thinking on this, what I heard from the applicant and from some of the public was that they would like to use this parking lot for employees to park, to free up some of that parking, so that when people do come into downtown, that they see empty spots and don't have to drive around looking for other spots. So I think in that way, the lot would be used if we have businesspeople telling their employees that that is where they should park.
Yeah, I, I can understand that. I'm not sure how you enforce that kind of policy other than a suggestion, but I understand that would help. Yep.
This is Leishen Gargano. I also think just, I mean, it may not encourage people to not park on the street, but, you know, as they learn about it, as they see it, I think it could help. I hope it would help, and who knows if down the line, it would create opportunity to just encourage that parking lot in some other way, I don't know. But also, it being a smaller lot initially, and then growing as the need arises, right? It gives them the opportunity to do the phases as that increased need comes. I do like that, right, just starting with the initial 14.
I mean, it's muted, but just so I could keep track, but.
And you're not muted, whoever is talking.
Yeah. Any other comments, commissioners?
This is Commissioner McMillan. I think we've all talked about it. I have one recommendation, and perhaps it can come out in our motions, that perhaps if there are questions about the landscape plan, and there's a little time between now and the Board of County Commissioners, maybe the landscape plan could be presented at that meeting to give folks a chance to see it. Sam Fitch, I think you made a good comment there, about folks having a chance to weigh in on it and see it, and it sounds like the applicant's design is pretty far down the road, and maybe that's a great place to have that discussion at the County Commissioners meeting. And then my only concern with the, the conditions as currently written is, I think it's number nine, talks about the landscape plan. And what I've heard today is that the applicant intends to kind of put the landscaping in as they go down the line with this, and the way it's written now, it just says, you know, when there's 50 spaces, they'll be landscaping. So I think I'd like to amend that in some way that says, you know, as they build their parking, they will landscape that section of the parking that's been built. And I, I think I heard them say they intended to do that. I just think it's important to memorialize it. So I think any motion to approve, I'd probably ask to amend that language slightly. And, and the last piece, and I don't, on my mind, and I don't know if, if the conditions need to be amended, but I think that the walkway needs to be an ADA accessible walkway that exits the parking lot. So I can look at the conditions and see if I have recommended language there, but aside from those two things, on the landscaping and the ADA conditions, I'm, I'm in support of the proposal. And thank you all for your time and work on it.
So Commissioner Fitch? On Gavin's point, condition nine says the interior landscaping has to cover 5%. And I think that's a different, that's a different item for interior landscaping as opposed to the screening and buffering. So I think nine is okay, and I like your idea of having the applicant present a more detailed landscaping plan by the time it goes to Board of County Commissioners. And I think they're already doing this, trying to have discussions with the neighbors about what that, how much landscaping they want, and does that like bollards, or would they prefer to have a hedge on the east side? So I think, I don't want to try to wordsmith a alternative to condition eight, but I think it can be considered a, a part of the, the record that's going forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Otherwise, I'm in support.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. Appreciate the, the comments that everybody's given, and I'm definitely in support. I did have one question for Molly on the, on the stop sign question. I guess that's outside of this, the scope of, of this project, but I guess my question is, when does that actually get triggered, you know, with change in vehicular traffic? And, and the question for need for stop sign in this study in regards to that?
Yeah, there were a couple concerns and comments regarding adding stop signs in the neighborhood, and I think maybe someone from the engineering team can better answer this, but my understanding is that there are, there's like national guidelines for installing stop signs, and there's several triggers they would have to hit, and I think they may only need to hit one of the triggers. I'm not sure what those triggers are. Again, someone from the Engineering Development Review Team, if they're here, maybe has more information on that, but.
This is Jennifer Stevenson. Hi, I, I'm from the engineering team, I can answer that. This is Jennifer Stevenson. This is actually not something that our group looks at, this is something that the Public Works Traffic Engineer has been made aware of, and I'm trying to find the email that I sent to Molly. We suggested that the applicants and the concerned citizens get in touch with the traffic engineer at Public Works to discuss this, because there are certain, what they call warrants, things that have to be hit to, to, to make a stop sign necessary and certain treatments, and so that's not something that the Engineering Review Group and Community Planning looks at, but that is something that they can work on with the traffic engineer.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, any, any further comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, this is Sam Libby. I have one more just for Molly. We mentioned earlier, one area that I think would be good to have more information about for the County Commissioners was around the maintenance and security of the site, just wanted to make sure that was on the list. I know we don't have that now. That's it.
Yep, thanks.
This is Commissioner Nasty. I was just, I wanted to echo Gavin's point about the ADA walkway. It looks like condition number five directly. directly references the parking lot for ADA standards, but not necessarily the park, the walkway. So maybe that would be a good condition to change the money to, to make sure that was covered.
Okay. So when, if someone makes a motion and is so inclined, perhaps that could be a part of the motion. So if there's no further comment, is there anyone who would like to go ahead and do that, make a motion?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I'm happy to do that.
Great.
I move the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval of docket SU-19-0014, the Niwot Business Association Parking Lot, to the Board of County Commissioners, subject to the 20 conditions in the staff packet with a modification to condition number five to extend the ADA standards to the walkway slash sidewalk, and a modification to number nine to indicate that the interior landscaping will cover at least 5% of the parking area as the phases are implemented, not waiting until they get 50 spots.
Is there a second for that motion?
Well, second.
Commissioner McMillan, seconds.
Great. Any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote then. Mark Bloomfield?
Aye.
Sam Fitch?
Aye.
Leishen Gargano?
Aye.
Anne Goldfarb, aye. Sam Libby?
Aye.
Gavin McMillan?
Aye.
Melanie Neskey?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you to both the staff and the applicants. It looks like there was a lot of work that went into getting this to us, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Okay. So we now have, the next item on our agenda is BVCP-20-0001, Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Midterm Update. And do we have a presentation by staff?
Yes, we do.
Great.
Can you hear me just fine?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, I'm sharing my screen now. Are you able to see my screen?
We see, I see AR. There we go. We see it now. Yeah, now we see it. Thank you.
You might want to go to presenter view.
Are you all able to see with a problem?
That's, that's good. Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
All right. Well, thank you so much. This is an informational presentation about the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan midterm update taking place in 2020. So the purpose of this agenda is to provide you all an update to what has been happening over the past six months regarding the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and to allow for the public to provide some testimonies about how they feel about this. However, I want to reiterate that this presentation is solely informational, and therefore no actions need to be taken at this moment.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt for one second? Could you please identify yourself for the record before we go forward?
Absolutely. My name is Alberto Losrios. I am a Planner One and Community Planning Permitting.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. So the purpose of a midterm update is primarily to review all the things that have and were decided during the major update, which took place in 2015 and were approved in 2017. And this is to ensure that everything is running smoothly and to make any corrections to, to move forward. This also is an opportunity to provide the public a time to make a public request process, or also staff can also initiate these. However, this is only a period where minor policy additions or clarifications should be allowed, and this is not intended to be a time to consider major policy changes. So some of the criteria that highlight during the midterm update is to make sure that these proposals are consistent with the established BVCP policies in the major update. Also, it's very important to emphasize that if there are no available resources, both from the county and city staff to evaluate these changes, then it is not recommended to move forward with the applications proposed in the midterm update. And also to make sure that the proposals are also compatible with adjacent land uses. So this is kind of a rough schedule of how it was first laid out before COVID happened. So all applications and the scope of this process has already been outlined. And we're currently in the screening process. All applications have already been screened, and we're currently presenting it to, to the four bodies. Beyond that, it is it's somewhat uncertain how we'll move forward due to COVID, but hopefully the city will have a plan set in place that would allow us to continue this midterm process by the end of the year. So out of the 13 applications which were submitted by March 2nd, only four of those pertain to Area 2, in which all four bodies, both the city and county, have jurisdiction over. So for these, it's number eight, 10, 11, and 12. And for these, the Board of County Commissioners can call up during a business meeting, a public hearing to hold for these four applications. And it was just informed to me that a business meeting will be taking place on June 30th. So they will decide by then whether or not there will be a public hearing for these items. This is just for reference. So this is the amendment matrix provided in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan in the Appendix B. And something that is not outlined here is that major policy changes will take considerable staff time and therefore should not be addressed during the midterm update. So the first application that we want to look at that pertains to the county is application number eight. And this was a proposed amendment and review of public and open space designated areas for accuracy, specifically looking at unincorporated areas in the county. We do not have a map to showcase because there are a myriad of places that we want to assess before we want to provide any further recommendations, such as the Gulf Courses in the Twin Lakes area. And for this reason, we do not want to move this forward, and neither does the city. However, we do acknowledge that this is something that needs to be looked at in the near future and would definitely like to move forward with this at a later date. The next applications are 10, 11, and 12, which are joined together since they are pertaining to the same Twin Lakes area, and also they were submitted by the same applicant. So we're looking at three parcels. Three, two of these are owned by the Boulder, Boulder County Housing Authority, and then another one was for, by the Boulder Valley School District. And they are requesting to change the land use designation from low density residential to open space, and then the other two parcels are being requested to move from public to open space. We do not recommend moving this forward, and neither does the city, because this will definitely take a lot of time and a lot of resources coming both from the city and the county, which are currently not available during the midterm update. This would mean that this would undertake a significant policy change, and we will have to adjust that, and we want to make sure that this is a very deliberate and lengthy process, and therefore does not fit for the midterm update nature. In addition to that, Boulder County Housing Authority and the Boulder Valley School District oppose these changes. This is for reference. This is the zoning district for the county, and these three parcels are considered rural residential. Another map for reference, this is a aerial view of the three parcels south of Twin Lakes. And this is another map just to outline the county and city boundaries. And that concludes my presentation. So thank you for your time, and we can move forward with questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions at this point?
This is Commissioner Neskey. I was just curious. It looked like we saw quite a lot of public comments for the Twin Lakes open space area. If the midterm time is not the appropriate time to address that, when would be the appropriate time?
The appropriate time would be during the major update, which occurs every 10 years. So the next scheduled one would be in 2025. And also invite Jean Gatz from the City of Boulder, or Abby Shannon from Boulder County to pitch in at any time with any other comments.
Yeah, I can add to that a little bit. So this is Abby Shannon, interim Long Range Planning Division Manager for Boulder County. So yes, Alberta is exactly right. The appropriate time would, would be at the 2025 major update. Another appropriate time for, to consider a change such as this is after a planning process were to occur. So if we decided to do, maybe undertake a gun barrel area plan, and it was deemed that land use changes were appropriate, that would be a good time to do it too. So it wouldn't necessarily have to happen during a major update. It could happen following a big community planning process. And that was something that was recommended by Planning Board and the City Council.
Thank you.
Other questions at this point?
Just one more procedural question. This is Commissioner McMillan on this topic, or any recommended change that is proposed or submitted by the public. Do I understand correctly that if the County Commissioners were to decide that this was something they'd like to take up now, could they initiate that process, or is this something that has to be agreed on by the city and the county? What is the process for that?
So yes, the County Commissioners could call this up now. So right now, all four of these proposals, as Alberta said, that are in Area 2, have been turned down for consideration at this time by Planning Board and City Council. But because they're over five acres in size, the city, the Board of County Commissioners could call them up. And they're going to make that determination on June 30th at a business meeting.
Understood. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Even though the County Commissioners could call that up, it would need to be approved by all four bodies. Is that correct? Because these, this property is in Area 2?
So the rules changed a little bit following the 2015 update, like during the 2015 update. And just to be clear, the call Florida is going to be considering on June 30th is just to decide whether or not to pull this into staff consideration. It wouldn't be to make the change to open space at that point. It would just be for staff to further consider it, have a community engagement process, and then bring a recommendation forward. And that recommendation would come forward to the three bodies. So the only time that Planning Commission gets involved is if it would be a map change in Area 3, then all four bodies would be involved in that decision. And then I think there are some like major service changes. I think that would involve Planning Commission as well.
That's right. Yes, this is Commissioner Goldfarb again. Yeah, I forgot we got cut out of those decisions. So, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we do have several people who have members of the public who have signed up to speak. So I will go through my spiel again. Any members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if they haven't signed up from the Planning Commission homepage beforehand. Once those who signed up in advance have spoken, any additional members of the public who would like to speak will be called on. If you join by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and the docket number in the chat box to the right. If you dialed into the meeting via phone, unmute yourself *6 and state your desire to speak. We will then add your name to the list in the chat box and proceed in that order. When it's your turn to speak, unmute yourself by clicking the microphone button at the bottom of the Teams bar, or if on the phone, push *6, and then state your name and address for the record. Timing system has been established. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Those wishing to speak can pool time at three minutes per person for a maximum of 10 minutes. You will need to provide the names and addresses of the other people, up to three others beside yourself, who are in attendance and donating their time. Anyone who is pooling time will need to attend the virtual hearing so we can verify their presence as we would at an in-person hearing. Please do not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. The chat box should be used for public hearing speaker signup only. Please remain on mute when possible. Members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. And the first member of the public that we have signed up to speak is David Reckberger. Are you present, David?
Oh, yeah. Hello, I'm David Reckberger. I live at 8756 Skyline Drive, and I'm the chairman of the Twin Lakes Action Group. We submitted land use changes 10, 11, and 12. We're an organization of about 1,300 citizens and businesses, and our mission is to preserve the rural residential look and feel of our neighborhoods and prevent annexations through open space. It was actually five years ago in the BVCP planning that TLAG proposed the same open space land use changes for these parcels in strong opposition to the proposed increased density made by the County Housing Authority. This very body then determined the county proposal to increase density was not appropriate on these lands due to a myriad of issues, including hydrology, wildlife corridors, agricultural lands, designated wetlands, and infrastructure issues at Twin Lakes, voting instead to halt the proposals from making a land use change. As Commissioner Goldfarb brought forward, that retaliation from our elected officials and staff was swift. Because of the strong position and foresight of this Planning Commission, the entire BVCP process was changed, and the intergovernmental agreements were rewritten to eliminate the four-body review process and strip the authority of this Planning Commission to vote on these items. In that same five years, there have been over 550 new dwelling units built in Gun Barrel. And remember that a dwelling unit could be a one-bedroom apartment or an eight-bedroom mansion. There's an average of 2.3 people per dwelling unit, so it's 1,256 new residents in the last five years. The city and the county preach sustainability and resilience, but they have allowed Gun Barrel to be overbuilt in excess of the area's carrying capacity, which is designed, defined as the maximum population an area will support before environmental infrastructure components begin to deteriorate. This speaks directly to sustainability, resilience, public safety, and the quality of life in Gun Barrel. In 2015, the BVCP staff stated Gun Barrel's carrying capacity was 1,5300 dwelling units. In 2020, there is already 5,850 units with no additional parks or open spaces for the residents to recreate. And of all those entire open space programs, only 0.2% of accessible open space is available for Gun Barrel's 12,300 residents. In fact, the Twin Lake open space is the most used in the entire system by size. As the city sees fit, it continues to building at breakneck paces. And so we look to the county to support our community and increase the recreational open space and hope that this commission will make a statement in support of land use changes 10, 11, and 12 to expand the Twin Lakes open space and encourage the commissioners to call this up at their meeting on the 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Goodman. Chris, are you present? Chris? Okay, let's move on then to Susan. I'm afraid to pronounce your last name incorrectly. If you could pronounce it for me. You're muted. You're muted. Unmute yourself. Can't, can't hear you.
Yeah, you might, you might try calling into the phone number, and we can get you during the public comment after the named people. The team is not busy working.
Okay, let's move on then. We'll come back. We'll come back to these people who we've skipped. Next on our list, we have Dinah or Dinah McKay, who is pooling time with Mike Smith and I believe Paige Doughty.
That's Miho Sheeda.
Oh, okay. So you're pooling time with?
Mike Smith and Miho Sheeda.
Okay, is Mike Smith present?
Yes, he is.
Okay, and the other?
Yeah, this is Miho Sheeda. I'm present as well.
Good, okay. All right, go ahead. You have nine minutes maximum.
Thank you. My name is Dinah McKay. I live at 4695 Portside Way in Gun Barrel. To determine the proper land use designation of the Twin Lakes parcels at 6655 Twin Lakes Road located in unincorporated Boulder County within Area 2, under the jurisdiction of the Gun Barrel Public Improvement District, I have provided a detailed history and supporting evidence in letters to the four bodies dated May 26 and May 31 as a whistleblower complaint, requesting them to review that information regarding Boulder County Commissioners' purchase of this property acting as the Jeepid Board and their improper transfer of ownership to the Boulder County Housing Authority, which should never have happened if they had performed their duty to the Jeepid. It's important to know that county commissioners are the board of directors for both the Jeepid and the Housing Authority, which creates a tremendous conflict of interest. Their duty to the Jeepid is to purchase available properties within the district for open space to prevent development. Their duty to the Housing Authority, who are big project developers, is the exact opposite, to promote development. When commissioners purchased this last available parcel for Jeepid open space within the district in 2013, they were bound, under the Jeepid resolution, to act as the Jeepid Board, to execute the purposes of the district on behalf of taxpayers, and to use the last remaining Jeepid open space matching funds to purchase the parcel for Jeepid open space. Commissioners had already jointly purchased other parcels for Jeepid open space, but when it came to this last parcel, they reneged on their duty to complete their obligations to taxpayers. When they transferred, do you hear that echo?
Yes.
Is it okay now to continue?
Yeah.
When they transferred ownership to Boulder County Housing Authority developers, it was sudden and shocking without any public review process, and it was the exact opposite of the mission and purposes of the district they were bound to execute, which was to purchase undeveloped land within the district for open space, specifically to prevent further annexation and development. Commissioners, as the Jeepid Board, whose duty it was to purchase Jeepid land for open space, did not have any of their normal discretion to transfer ownership of Jeepid land to BCHA developers. That transfer was not legally proper. And even though commissioners used monies from the county general fund to purchase the parcel, Jeepid taxpayer funds had been deposited into the general fund in 2009, making Jeepid taxpayers joint owners. Therefore, ownership of the parcel should be reverted back to its rightful owners, Boulder County taxpayers and Jeepid joint owners and designated Jeepid open space. The Jeepid Advisory Committee never set any Boulder County parks and open space criteria as necessary for Jeepid open space purchases. Yet the parcel is a very valuable wildlife corridor adjacent to existing open space, and there is overwhelming public interest and support for the land use of this parcel as open space to expand the Twin Lakes open space for the benefit of the greater Gun Barrel community. That would fulfill the vision of the 1977 Boulder Valley Comp Plan to put a 40-acre community park south of the Twin Lakes, which is desperately needed now with the current overcrowding for the sake of the local wildlife and the health and well-being of our community. The Gun Barrel Retail Corps IGA, which was Gun Barrel's sub-community plan, was destroyed when it was completely built over with dense three-story apartment buildings in 2015. City and county staff still show maps with the Retail Corps as if it were still there, but it's gone. And so is the mini Pearl Street Mall, an urban park that was supposed to serve as a focal point and gathering area for the community center with large grassy areas with benches and picnic tables. That's all gone. And what the community got was dense apartment buildings, the exact opposite of what they agreed to in the IGA. Like a slap in the face, it was devastating. Back in 1992, county planners said Gun Barrel was a land use tragedy, an example of growth that just happened. In 1993, that is why the Jeepid was formed, because the growth in Gun Barrel was out of control. There was no area plan, and the growth was obscene at 8% a year, four times the growth limit set by the city. The county was stressed to provide services for that urban growth, and they were eager to provide the 50% matching funds to help pass the tax, to fix the roads, and to buy open space to stop any further annexations and development in the district. That was 28 years ago, and today Gun Barrel still doesn't have a plan. Thankfully, the Planning Board agreed that a broad area plan for all of Gun Barrel is overdue and acknowledged that Gun Barrel has no sub-community plan. Since the late '60s, for over 50 years, growth has just happened in Gun Barrel without any comprehensive planning. There needs to be a moratorium on development in Gun Barrel until a broad area plan for all of Gun Barrel can be completed. Better relations with the greater Gun Barrel community could be greatly improved if county commissioners would begin by resolving the debacle they created at Twin Lakes that has cost Jeepid homeowners thousands of dollars in legal fees to try to rectify and to revert ownership of 6655 Twin Lakes Road back to its rightful owners and to expand the Twin Lakes open space that is centrally located and connected to trails for all Gun Barrel residents, which would help provide for the urban park and the community gathering area that was lost when the Gun Barrel Retail Corps was destroyed. I ask the Planning Commission to deeply consider the information and evidence provided in this whistleblower complaint, to strongly recommend Boulder County Commissioners transfer back ownership of the property at 6655 Twin Lakes Road to its rightful owners, Boulder County taxpayers and Jeepid joint owners, and change the land use designation to Jeepid open space. That action would not require any regulatory taking or buying because the property was transferred between Boulder County accounts and can be transferred back just as easily as the commissioners did it behind closed doors without any public review process whatsoever. If any further evidence is required, it can be provided, including firsthand witness testimony by Jeepid Advisory Committee members and public hearing statements made by commissioners, committing themselves to purchase Jeepid open space properties with 50% open space matching funds, 600,000 of which still remains today. Do not remain silent and enable this injustice. The Gun Barrel community knows the truth, and if commissioners do not correct this injustice to 4,100 Jeepid taxpayers, our voices and protests will only become louder and louder. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paige Doughty. Is Paige present?
Hello, this is Donna George. Paige couldn't make it, but I will be saying something in my speech.
Okay, so you have, Donna, you have said you're pooling time with, I don't see it on my list here.
My daughter, Sarah George, and my husband, Mark George.
And is Sarah there?
Say hello. Hi, I'm Sarah. I'm pooling time with Donna George.
And I'm Mark George. I'm also pooling time for Donna George.
Thank you. Donna, you have up to nine minutes.
Okay, great.
You can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hello, my name is Donna George. I live at 4661 Tally Ho Court. I put in a request for review of the land use designation map to make sure it is as accurate as possible. I noticed a number of inaccuracies in the land use map that needed to be addressed. The city Planning Board and council both agreed that these need to be addressed, but thought that it would take too much time in this midterm update, which staff and city officials wanted to limit the scope of due to the issues associated with the coronavirus pandemic we are in the midst of. I recommended that the 2020 Boulder Valley Comp Plan midterm update be postponed for a couple of years, as many citizens are dealing with the economic and health implications of the pandemic. However, city officials, city staff and officials have chosen to select a few of the requests to go forward in the process for future study and have not allowed others to go through due to time constraints. For instance, staff analysis for my request number eight stated, "Staff resources required for a comprehensive evaluation is beyond the available city and county resources for the midterm update." And for requests 10, 11, and 12, staff wrote, "A considerable amount of work is needed by both city and county staff to evaluate the proposed changes to all three parcels." However, staff presented a potential land use change request from Boulder Housing Partners and Element Properties for a property on Odell Place at the Planning Board meeting, and we still don't know what the land use change they are requesting will be. Why are Boulder Housing Partners and Element Properties receiving preferential treatment during this 2020 midterm update? Just because a project has affordable housing in it does not mean that it has carte blanche to bypass procedures others have to follow and do whatever they want. Affordable housing projects should not usurp democracy. Affordable housing is not the only important issue Boulder Valley is facing, and yet many of the requests that have been voted to proceed forward in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan process have affordable housing components to them. Request number 10, 11, and 12, our land use change request to go from public low-density residential to open space. This is a straightforward request. It is less of a change than going from medium-density residential to business. Request number five, which was approved to go forward. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan states that land use change requests can be considered during the midterm update. If my request and others are postponed to the 2025 update, does that mean that the can has been kicked down the road and no land use decisions will be made on these properties until the 2025 update? If these evaluations and decisions are delayed for five years due to limited staff resources and time for this midterm update, are we going to look at these requests in 2025? If staff and government officials state that there is no time to look at these requests at this time, then they are still on the books and should be considered in the 2025 update. These requests cannot be tossed aside as if they were never submitted. If there are not sufficient resources to proceed with the 2020 midterm update, then the update should be postponed. What staff and government officials should not do is give preferential treatment to their pet projects while not giving consideration to other requests. We are in a global health pandemic, and government offices have been closed for almost three months. Disregard for citizens' work and input on the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan is not acceptable. This is supposed to be a document produced by the citizens for the citizens in the planning of their community, not a product of staff and government officials. Please provide guidance on what happens to the requests that were not sent forward for review in this midterm update due to time constraints of staff and government officials during this stressful pandemic. I would now like to make some comments from my neighbor down the street, Paige Doty. She couldn't make it, so I would like you to hear her comments. Dear Boulder County Planning Commission, the people of Gun Barrel have spoken to protect the Twin Lakes Parcels, the North and South Fields, over and over again. This meeting, like so many before it, has brought forward the voices of the people who live here, calling for the designation of this land as open space. The research has been done to prove that these parcels have value as a wildlife quarter, as a home for plants and animals, as an owl, hawk, and falcon hunting ground, and as a recreational space for people. The research has been done to show that these lands have a high water table and are, for this reason alone, unsuitable for development. I see no reason these lands should be, should not become open space, and as has been mentioned by others, legally, these lands should be given back to the people as such. I urge you, in your role as gatekeepers for changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, to hear the citizenry of Gun Barrel. As a fairly new resident of this area, formerly of downtown Boulder, I was surprised to learn of the history of a lack of attention and planning to this place. As a mother of two small children, who has chosen to raise my family in Gun Barrel, I want to see this place become more livable, bikeable, and community-oriented. We need green spaces, parks, hiking trails, bike paths, that get us safely to actual walkable areas. Our family is so excited to now be able to bike safely into the Gun Barrel Center. Thank you for the connection to the Lobo Trail. Now we need a real center, a community hub that people would actually go and use, a place to meet friends and neighbors while frequently frequenting local establishments, ones that already exist and ones that could come, not just a strip mall with a grocery store. In conclusion, I urge you to protect the North and South Fields permanently, and second, to make a true community plan with the residents of Gun Barrel so that we feel heard and so that we can take ownership and stewardship of our own spaces. There is so much that could be done here to create an incredible place to live, but not without the input of those who already live here. We are here. We love these fields. We'd love to create a real community that includes retail, restaurants, library, a walkable downtown with parks and green spaces. Let us be part of the process to dream what could be in a democratic and inclusive way. This would be a true comprehensive plan, not a hierarchical decision that ignores what the people want. Thank you for your time, Paige Doty. I also want to note that one of the, when the staff started to talk, they said that this land use request, the 10, 11, and 12 ones, would require a significant policy change. This is a land use change request. It's not a policy change. It's no more a policy change than request number seven or request number five that went from a residential to a business. It's, it's a land, it's a land use request. It's not a policy change. It's a land use request. The request can be submitted at this time. It's not something that, that can't be done at this time. The citizens have spoken. This is what they want. I don't understand what the, why they keep hesitating and why they keep. And my fear is, is what's going to happen? They did say something about, well, in a, in a, they could come up with some like plan, like they put in an area plan or something, and this can come up again. So that's why I'm asking that five-year question. Is, is the, is the county commissioners going to come up in two or three years and say, we're going to change this, and we're going to put housing on this property? So please let us know why our thing is being not looked at at this time and what the, what the process is for looking at it five years from now. Thank you for your time.
And, and you're, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Going back to Susan to see if she's able to connect with us now to make her comments. Susan?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
I can. I can. Could you please state your name for the record and your address, and you have up to three minutes to speak?
Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Susan Balehash. I live at 6848 Bugle Court in Boulder. That's 80301. So I know you've heard quite a few people talk, but I just wanted to put my my voice to this because I really want to be sure that the people of Gunbarrel and Twin Lakes in Red Fox Hills are heard. So I respectfully urge you to support the Twin Lakes Action Group's request that the rural residential parcels on Twin Lakes Road be designated as open space. I've lived in Boulder County for over 40 years. During that time, a majority of Boulder County taxpayers, including myself, have voted time and again to have our tax dollars spent to preserve open space. It's really clear that open space is a priority for Boulder County residents. These Twin Lakes properties provide a valuable opportunity to designate open space in an area that already provides wildlife with a viable travel corridor between the Twin Lakes Recreation Area and other parcels of open space habitat along J Road. In addition, I have some serious concerns with development on these parcels of land. First is the high water table in the area. My neighborhood, Red Fox Hills, is just east of the Twin Lakes parcel. Many homeowners already have problems with wet basements and some pumps that run 24/7. Development on these parcels could create additional runoff and negatively impact a stormwater system that already struggles with major rainfall. My other main concern regards the Gunbarrel infrastructure and carrying capacity. Recent high-density development near the local King Supers has already increased traffic and placed additional demands on the few existing neighborhood parks and open space. There's only one grocery store for 12,000 residents. The number of cars parked on the street continues to grow while RTD is reducing service to our area. In summary, designating these parcels as open space would moderate impact on the local hydrology and the limited infrastructure while supporting the values of open space held dear by so many Boulder County taxpayers. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak who has not previously signed up?
Yes, this is Harold Halstein. I am on the list in the chat. May I have a moment?
Yes, if you can give us your name and address, please, and you have up to three minutes.
Great. Yes, my name is Harold Halstein. I'm at 3664 Pinedale Street, the city of Boulder, and I'm also a member of the Boulder Open Space Board of Trustees. I'm calling in commissioners. I know you are looking at some challenging and complex decisions here, and particularly about designations under the Comprehensive Plan. I wanted to call in to talk about a related but slightly different matter, which is the topic of dedications, and the purpose of my call is mainly educational. Under Article 71308 of the Land Use Code, the Planning Commission and the Parks and Open Space Advisory Board both have responsibility to review and oversee any vacation of land dedications that are basically conducted in our systems in the county. I call, through my experience as an open space board member, to sort of relay and communicate a lesser-known fact that a great deal of our open space property is created through the land dedication process. Essentially, what that is, is that when a private developer wants to subdivide a parcel, the local government makes a request of certain amounts of acreage to benefit the community for certain elements of growth associated with that development. Most commonly in our area, those types of dedications are for either open space or to the Boulder Valley School District. One thing, as I sort of follow this process along, that I think is interesting is that under this Article 71308, it is required that both the Planning Commission and the Open Space Advisory Board review any vacation of dedications. One of the parcels in question, I believe it's the South Parcel there at Twin Lakes, is a dedication to Boulder Valley School District that was granted by the Williams Brothers, the original subdividers in that area, for park and school purposes only. So I raise this issue to communicate that the law being followed related to dedication-vacation processes is not only critical to the parties directly around these that are personally interested, but it's also important to our work as an open space system in general. So I'm a little bit confused if there is not resources to look at the citizens' requests about open space usage as a designation. I basically wonder and ask, has anyone from the Planning Commission decided who is going to lead the dedication-vacation process and who on the Open Space Advisory Board will be reviewing? Because essentially, the same conversations will be mandated under law for any transference of title on that particular parcel. And I'm delighted. I'm going to leave it there. If there's any questions about this particular issue, I know it's new to many folks. I'm happy to answer them. But it's important people do read closely 7-1308, which is about the dedication-vacation process because that parcel cannot be used for anything other than school and park purposes presently.
Thank you. I'm not able to see the list, so if there's anyone else on the list, if someone could let me know. Or if there's anyone who'd like to speak who hasn't signed up.
Anne, this is Commissioner McMillan. I think you've got everyone on the list as far as what I can see here, so.
Okay. Good. All right. Let's open it up for discussion then. I know this is for informational purposes only. I don't know if commissioners, you have questions for staff? Perhaps for the county attorney? Or discussion points you'd like to raise?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I do have a question about the public comment about request 10, 11, and 12 being really just a designation change rather than a policy change? And I'm wondering if staff could speak to why they called it a policy change?
I can speak to that. This is Abby Shannon. A policy change in that, like, as a map change, it would lead to a policy change. So it would be going from having the possibility of residential uses to then just being an open space use. So Donna is absolutely right. It's not a policy change per se, but just because the map would be potentially changing, that would be a policy change and... Yeah.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I understand how it can be a mapping change, but how does that become a policy change?
A map change in that it leads to a policy change. So we've designated this. Right now, on the maps, it's designated as public for the BVSD parcels, and it's designated as low-density residential for the Boulder County Housing Authority parcel. So to change them from those designations to open space, it's a map change, but it's also a policy change by saying that we're no longer seeing these as public and residential. We're now seeing these as open space. So like, that's the policy shift.
So is a land use change always a mapping change and therefore a policy change?
I guess I'm not... Sorry, I'm not able to articulate this well. It's not a policy change, like, in the text, but it's a policy change. It's a direction change, right? So it leads to maybe different... It could lead to different development types by declaring it as open space as opposed to leaving it as low-density residential and public.
And maybe I can jump in a little bit here, too. Dale's case with community planning and permitting. I think Abby is exactly right on that point. It implicates all sorts of policies in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And as we know from going through this process in 2015, how complex the questions around Gunbarrel and specifically these parcels were and how much effort and time went in. There's all sorts of policies in the Comp Plan where we're trying to encourage housing and find places for affordable housing in the community. And so by taking this out of that possibility, by moving it to open space, that implicates those policies. We're not implementing those policies in the Comp Plan per se. You could have a land use change that is just implementing current policy. But in this case, we have policies that we still would need to discuss and work out as that moves forward, so.
Thank you.
So this is Sam Fitch. I'd like to start by a disclosure similar to what Mark said earlier. So my wife, Leslie Durgan, worked, actually after the 2015 decisions were made, worked with Boulder County Housing Authority and Boulder Housing Partners as a part-time consultant. That was over after Boulder County and various municipalities adopted a regional housing plan. She's not working for them anymore. So I don't see a conflict of interest. We have no family interest in this one where the other... I agree with Dale. This is a very complicated set of decisions about what happens to these particular parcels, but also to the process complicated in the process of how what happens at Twin Lakes impacts the rest of Gunbarrel. As I think a number of the comments received online make clear this is part of a larger debate about what will happen to already incorporated portions of Gunbarrel, the whole issues of development, particularly anything higher than low-density residential. So the other thing I would like to address or to have address is to ask the county land use attorney to address the question raised by Ms. McKay, which strike me as issues that have been, in fact, litigated extensively between the Boulder County Commissioners and TLAG and other groups that have claims on the North and South Parcels. So I think we need to get that in the record to know where we are with that litigation. And I think Erica Rogers is there and could speak to that question.
Hi, this is Erica Rogers, Assistant County Attorney, and I can talk about the status of the litigation. So the homeowners, including Ms. McKay, raised these issues in a lawsuit, and the county did prevail at every level. The district court dismissed their claims. The homeowners appealed, and the Court of Appeals agreed with the district court. The Colorado Supreme Court denied certiorari, meaning that they did not choose to hear the case, so the Court of Appeals' decision is final. Do you have any additional questions about that, or does that answer your question?
Sam, did you have anything further on that? Did you want a little bit more information?
No, I mean, I think that establishes the legal questions. It strikes me that the pressure on, from TLAG and specifically in the online submissions from Dinah McKay are asking the Planning Commission really to reverse or to relitigate in public opinion or in the commission things which have been decided by the courts. And I don't think that's a simple matter. My personal opinion is, in fact, probably Gunbarrel does need to have a comprehensive sub-community planning process. I will not volunteer to be on that committee or to have anything to do with it simply because I don't think I'll probably live long enough to go to all the public hearings that you would be required to go to. So I think the issues really before the Planning Commission are, do we have reason to override the city planning board, city council vote, which is not to go forward with these as midterm updates? It just seems to me that's the only thing that staff could possibly do at this point.
I don't know if Dale or Erica, you want to speak to that. It's my understanding that these are Area 2 issues and that, at this point, the Planning Commission no longer has input on those issues?
Well, we do have input in terms of what we recommend to the county commissioners to call this up or not to call this up. That's really the only decision about what we want to say to the commissioners. It's not what we want to do on the policy questions at hand.
Right. I was just wanting to make sure that that was clear to people.
And that is the case, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that was part of the direction when we did make those changes back in 2015 again, is that Planning Commission would still be a recommending body, and we'd have these venues for you to be able to to review the policies and view the direction and be a recommending body to the county commissioners or still be able to provide input.
And we can certainly include your comments in the staff recommendation for the call-up for the county commissioners to consider. It won't be a formal recommendation today, but I'm happy to incorporate your your concerns and your thoughts to pass that along to them.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Goldfarb. I was on the Planning Commission when we heard these issues in regard to the properties located on Twin Lakes Road and, I think the... Is it Twin Lakes Road and Kahlua Road? Is it 11 and 12 that we were dealing with when we were dealing with the housing issue?
It was 10, 11, and 12.
All three of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was just two. Okay, so I was part of that decision-making process, and it was a very difficult decision-making process. And I think, as evidenced by the fact that when we did refuse to allow that to go forward, as David Reckberger said, the response to that decision was swift. We were cut out of making decisions on those kinds of issues. And at this point, what we can do is make recommendations. I was really disturbed when that happened because I felt like the process didn't work in the way that some bodies wanted it to work, and so the rules got changed on us, which I think is very unfortunate in terms of the democratic process. I would agree with Sam in that I think something needs to be done about Gunbarrel. It's obviously a big mess. And it seems like, I know this is, it's a big project, but I'm wondering whether or not it would be beneficial at this point to put some resources toward straightening all this out rather than having to deal with this on a piecemeal basis as these kinds of issues come up in regard to Gunbarrel. So I would like to make some kind of a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners in regard to all of this.
So this is Commissioner Gargano. I remember something about the mess of, you know, part of it being incorporated and part of it not being incorporated. And I remember hearing from the city that many of these... that many of these issues come from the fact that they're only half incorporated. And it would be very difficult for us to put resources into that when the communities made it very clear they don't want to incorporate the part that is unincorporated. So I think that just sort of puts us in this bind of being able to untangle the mess, which of course has its own benefits to the community. It's why they're choosing not to incorporate, right? But I, it's, and maybe you all could correct me because it's been a while since we talked about this, but it just seemed like we, if we're gonna put resources towards it, there have to be other things that change.
What, this is Commissioner Goldfarb. What other changes are you referring to?
Maybe, and maybe staff can help me remember what this was, but I thought I remembered when city, when we talked to the city about this a little bit. Because some of the building that's happening in Gun Barrel isn't incorporated. But then if it's a, you know, it's a joint plan, then maybe there's a workaround. I don't know what the barriers have been to date. Maybe Dale can help with that?
Sure, I'll try to. This is Dale Case with Community Planning and Permitting again. Yeah, Leishen, you're exactly correct. It is part of Gun Barrel is incorporated, so it's within the city under their jurisdiction. And most of the larger developments and more recent developments are happening in the city as, as we would call for under the Comp Plan. That, that is the idea of Area 2 is that it gets annexed and develops per the policies and land use map of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. There are all those places that were developed long ago that developed in the county in the unincorporated jurisdiction, which is mainly the residential section. Those areas have chosen not to move forward with annexation, and so it has created this dichotomy and created a number of these issues of trying to figure out how to best provide the services that people in the community want and really need. So I think there's value to trying to figure out how to move forward with, with some planning processes jointly with the city and with the community to, to work on these, whether it's all of Gun Barrel or again, looking at specific areas in the interim as they come up. But it's, it's not a, I think it's something that's been on the books and going through the history of things for, since Gun Barrel's inception. And the plan was always that this would annex eventually when they had contiguity to the city. And that just never happened, and it's caused all these, these planning issues later on and community service issues, so.
Thanks Dale. Other comments?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Libby. I have a couple of comments. I certainly don't have the history on this topic that many of you have, and neither do a few of my other commissioners here on the board. So I think I'm not equipped to speak to everything on this, but I do think there is clearly more to be done here. How that happens and how to do it effectively is not clear to me, but I'll have to trust the staff and our colleagues at the city as well how to do that. I think my recommendation would be that we make a statement from the Planning Commission that we think this is still worthy of being considered in the next five years as a priority. What happens with that is up to those who decide that. But I think it's clear that there's a lot of community concern around this. And I would just encourage the community to realize or reflect that this is the democratic process is happening through this process, right? They're not being cut off from that. This is exactly how it's designed to work. So we're doing our best to understand and hear those things and give feedback to those in the ways that we can. My other two comments are smaller. One is that I think there would be some assistance to kind of separating these three parcels from being one big block of problems into separate problems. It seems that the difference in dedication as well as the difference in potential development possibilities for parcels are pretty different among these three. Some for schools, some for affordable housing, different ownership, different, different soil conditions, et cetera. So I think in the future, focusing public feedback and effort on them separately might be effective. And then the other comment was just that as I review the area and do my research, it seems like there is quite a bit of open space available to residents nearby to these facilities already. You know, people who have been making comments here, in some cases, neighborhoods are surrounded by 270 degrees of open space. It's already protected with trails and access. And so I think there's a, it's all relative, right? You know, nobody wants development next to their house. But I'm trying to think of the community as a whole as part of that kind of planning process. So it's not as if this is in the middle of a area with no access to good open space and trails. So that's my common recommendation is that we make some kind of suggestion as best we can.
Commissioner Gargano, I just wanted to follow up with you. The reason that they were done together is because the affordable housing was going to be for staff, and so it was a joint proposal.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Dale, the project was going to be on the three parcels, 10, 11, and 12. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it was correct. During the 2015 update, there was applications to change those to medium-density residential land use designation and applications to do it as open space. So there were competing applications that we considered during the 2015 update.
And then, and then when we were actually hearing that affordable housing project, it was all considered as one? As one, is that right?
Yeah, it was all joint, it was jointly being considered with the school district and the housing authority working together on a plan for that area.
And, and what was being asked of us was to annex it to the city?
What was being asked was, at that time, it was a land use designation change under the Comp Plan to, I think, medium-density residential, if I remember correctly.
Okay. And then there was, was there an issue of contiguity there? That there was some small?
So that was, yeah, yeah. So I'll go back on that a little bit. So there was an issue that was brought up. That wasn't a comprehensive plan issue, wasn't part of the comprehensive plan, but with the fact that in order for the city then to annex and develop, or the county housing authority and the school district to annex and develop the parcels, they would have to annex the Twin Lakes Open Space parcel or come down the right-of-way to gain contiguity to those parcels. There was not direct contiguity to a developed portion of the city at that, at that location. So they would annex either the Twin Lakes, across Twin Lakes Open Space, or they could annex down one of the right-of-ways to get to, to the parcels.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
So this is Commissioner Fitch. Other issue that I think deserves underlining is a lot of the public arguments have to do with the availability of these parcels for open space. I think it's fairly evident from the public comments that in fact, they are used as de facto open space. But I think that Mr. Halstein spoke to the issue. POSAC is, this is a big issue. And it seems to me that they were consulted the last time and chose not to make this particular conversion of those fields, North and South Parcels, into county open space at that time. So in some ways, making the map designation, as Ms. George suggested, is really taking that decision to say, this will be open space. And that POSAC would have to take that as a priority. It seems to me these are issues that are equally, if not more, for POSAC to decide. Certainly to have input to the commissioners about what the priorities are for this particular area as a part of Gun Barrel or particular neighborhood relative to the entire rest of the county when you're considering what you're gonna use open space resources for.
Thoughts, anyone?
This is Commissioner McMillan. I just echo, I think, Sam Libby's sentiments. I would agree, and I think we all would, that there's some work to be done here. And we're taking all that information today and some informational item. I don't know, there's necessarily action for us to take here other than to say, we've heard all this stuff, and I think the comments and the record reflect it. We agree, there's some additional planning that needs to be done. And I think that message should get passed on to the county commissioners and House. If they deem it important to pull it up during this revision of the Comp Plan, then that's, that's their purview. But I think as far as what our role is here today is to listen. And I think the record reflects it, all the comments. And I'll say it myself here, yeah, there's probably some additional planning work to be done here. What that process is, I think needs some, some more thought. And I don't know that it's necessarily the Comp Plan update process right now. So I don't feel that we necessarily need to make a motion as an informational item. I do think the record reflects our conversation. And I would, I would suggest that we, that we leave it. It's my thing.
And we can summarize the record for the county commissioners here and this general conversation so that they have it to consider when they do the call-up.
Yeah. This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think this, as, as Sam and Gavin said, this is for informational purposes. We receive the information and we had a discussion. And I think if that gets passed along to the county commissioners, that's, that's our role at this point.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I would agree with that. I would, I would add that, yeah, it sounds like there's definitely some more study that needs to be done. It sounds a little bit thorny, given the incorporated versus unincorporated. And so just to make sure that our record reflects, at least my opinion is, like, they need to come up with a process for doing a, doing some planning for the Gun Barrel area, given the two different jurisdictions.
Yeah. Any, any further comments in regard to what any of the commissioners would like passed on to the board? All right. Well, I think we have finished with that topic then at this point. Is there anything else from, well, first of all, thank you to staff for the help on this. This is, this is a, this is a tough decision to make, I know, especially in these unusual times. So I think we're all appreciative of that fact and how that impacts your decision to go forward on some of these issues. So thank you. Anything else that we need to take up at this point? Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Bloomfield, I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Okay, I think that was unanimous. All right, thanks, everybody. Stay safe, stay well.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.